Okay, we are live and recording.
All right, good morning and welcome to the Friday edition of the September Board of Trustees meeting. My name is Brandon Stallings, Chair of the Board of Trustees. I'll be Chair for approximately two more minutes, and I will try and wipe that grin off of my face. This morning, we have the privilege and honor of hosting Supreme Court Justice Martin Jenkins, who will be administering the oath of office to our incoming Chair, Vice Chair, and new Board Member. Now, when you hear the term "Supreme Court Justice," you might be tempted to think, wrongly, of course, that to be a justice, one must be unapproachable, sitting in an ivory tower, inhaling Waymo to traverse the city. But you spend five minutes with Justice Jenkins, and you will find that he is that everyman jurist, the quintessential judicial officer who has exquisite legal acumen, but who also cares deeply for the person and recognizes the human condition. A man who once famously gave his own shoes off of his feet to an unhoused individual who asked for them. That's the type of caring man Justice Jenkins is, and it might also explain why he is so willing to come to the State Bar to conduct our swearing-in. Justice Jenkins has the academic pedigree of graduating from Santa Clara University before entering San Francisco School of Law. He has that work experience to give him that broad understanding that undergirds a highly proficient jurist, working as a district attorney, near and dear to my heart, also serving as a trial attorney for the United States Department of Justice, Civil Rights Division. He has served at every level of the judiciary, including a Superior Court Judge, a Justice, and then, prior to being appointed to the Supreme Court by Governor Newsom, he served as the Governor's Appointment Secretary, which has, as its mission, the appointment of the best and brightest jurists who also reflect the rich diversity of California. But what makes Justice Jenkins even more impressive is that he played in the NFL. And the Venn diagram for Supreme Court Justice, an NFL player has to be incredibly small. This, however, does not change the way he relates to people, and has been consistently described by friends, colleagues, and litigants as an unwaveringly fair jurist, one who does not have a political agenda but seeks to apply the facts to the law in the fairest way possible. Most recently, I had the opportunity to hear Justice Jenkins speak at a judicial swearing-in ceremony in Kern County. And if you know me, anyone who shows the Central Valley some love is a friend of mine and a friend of the everyman. So I can think of no better person to swear in not only our new Supreme Court appointee Board Member, our first non-lawyer Chair, and not only that, but the first ever non-lawyer Chair and Vice Chair duo, and that person is Martin Jenkins. Please welcome him.
So let me start by saying it's a pleasure to be with you here this morning. I do want to say a few things, sort of in a way of trying to inspire the good work that you do in such an inspiring way. But I have to say, Brandon, that's -- I'm 70 years old, 71 years old. I've been introduced on many, many different platforms and stages. That's the best introduction I have ever heard. Thank you so much. You can't describe what I did during the cup of coffee I had with the CLCoxes playing football. It wasn't that at all. I made the best decision I ever made in my life by deciding to quit. Four weeks late for law school, I returned to law school and never looked back. I did not belong there, and now with, as much as people love professional football, with all the findings of CTE, I think that was the right decision for me. For others, it's fine that they continue their career. So I want to let you know that I jumped at the opportunity to be with you today, to come and swear in this new member, Mr. Giorgiello, Vice Chair, Mr. Tony, and you, Mr. Sisneros. I feel like I know you because I saw your materials in the nomination process when I sat with my colleagues deliberating over whether or not we should give our imprimatur to these nominations, and an amazing slate of officers, leaders, and I like the fact that, in fact, the leadership involves two non-lawyers. I think you provide a perspective that those of us who ply our trade in courtrooms don't always have. And so it's a good mix, I think, of different experiences and life experiences that need to be brought to bear on an organization who, at its purpose, is the protection of the public here in the state. But I also want to take a moment to congratulate you for the choice of your new Executive Director, Laura Speed. We speak in hushed tones in the branch about Laura Speed. She has been with the branch for now 14, 15 years, and I came to know her over the last three years, working with her in leadership services. And she staffs the meetings for the APJs, which is the chief's inner counsel, that help her make the amazing decisions and difficult decisions she has to make. And she served as staff to a committee I chair called the Bias Committee, the Supreme Court and Court of Appeals Bias Committee. And the charge of that committee is to come up with recommendations and best practices for the appellate courts, to try to prevent bias in all of its manifestations in court interactions. I mean from the time people walk into clerk's offices, to their ability to file the notice of appeal, to appearances in the court for oral argument, and all in between. That committee is comprised of six district Court of Appeal justices from across the state. It is an august group of lawyers in the private bar, and the public bar, and the appellate bar, the clerks of several courts, appellate courts across the state, and, of course, a couple of members of the injudant appellate representation panels that represent the injudant defendants, large number of them in criminal matters in the appellate courts. And she has served with aplomb. She gets it from the 10,000-foot level, and bias issues can be quite fraught, and she gets it in the micro level as well. She is always appropriate. She reads the room, amazingly so, and her integrity is without question. So you have made a wonderful choice for your next Executive Director, and I say, we will miss you, Laura. I see your smiling face there, so I know you're happy about this. I am not happy about this. But I know that the branch's loss is the state's gain. So I wish you Godspeed and good luck. And if they ever say or do something to you that's a problem, I got people, you call me, okay? So I just want to just say a few words to you, as I mentioned about, that I think I hope will serve to inspire you. You know your calling. Most of you have done this work for several years, and Mr. Giorgiello, I think you're new to it. But the fact of the matter is that, in recent years, there's been a great deal of discussion about professionalism in the practice of law. It's always a subject of debate, but it has been even more so recently. An unregulated profession may soon lose its right to call itself a profession, as public doubts mount about the fairness of the practice of law and the fairness of courts who are served by officers of court. Responsiveness to these concerns regarding fairness, the State Bar Act says as follows: "The protection of the public is the bar's highest priority, and the Board of Trustees achieves this priority through its licensing, regulatory, and disciplinary functions. Those who seek to vindicate their rights and/or those who seek to secure for themselves the important promises enshrined in our Constitution invariably turn to lawyers for assistance." And I know we all agree, they should be able to do so with a measure of confidence in the competency of the lawyers they entrust their very lives to. So as you embark on this important work that will begin this morning, I think it important to acknowledge that no matter the area of law that lawyers practice in, lawyers at their best commit to use their legal services, their legal skills, rather, in the service of others, and that includes serving those who cannot afford attorneys. Let me share with you, as I close before I issue the oath, administer the oath, one judge's view of the dichotomy between the professional lawyer, who views the law as a service profession, and the lawyer who views the law as one premised on seeking recompense for their services. Judge Albert Tuttle, who I never had the chance to meet, but is one of my judicial heroes, was the Chief Judge of the Fifth Circuit Federal Court of Appeals, and he and a small cadre of his colleagues, four to be exact, took on the arduous and dangerous task of giving shape and content to the Supreme Court's mushy but seminal decree in Brown versus the Board of Education, the y'all-deliberate speed order to desegregate the Southern schools. They undertook the task in the face of opposition, some from their appellate colleagues, some from recalcitrant federal district judges in the trial courts, who made it their business not to enforce that order, and in the face of death threats to them and their families. And he had this to say about a professional lawyer. He said, I quote, "The professional lawyer is, in essence, one who provides a service. The lawyer has no goods to sell, no land to till. He or she, their only asset is him or herself. It turns out that there is no right price for service, for what is the share of a professional lawyer's worth. If the lawyer does not contain the quality of integrity, that lawyer is worthless. If the lawyer's work is synonymous with integrity, then that lawyer is priceless. The lawyer's value is either nothing or infinite, for like love, talent is only useful in its expenditure, and it is never exhausted. So certainly it is that a lawyer must eat. So set what price you must on your service, but never, never confuse service, which is great, with compensation, be it money, power, or fame, which is trivial." With that, Mr. Giorgiello, will you step up so I can administer the oath of office? So raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, David Giorgiello.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or a purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
As a member of the Board of Trustees.
As a member of the Board of Trustees.
Of the State Bar of California.
Of the State Bar of California.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, Mark Tony.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or a purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties which I'm about to enter.
The duties about -- say it again, I'm sorry.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
As Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees.
As Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees.
Of the State Bar of California.
Of the State Bar of the State of California.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And certainly, last but not least, your new Chair, Mr. Jose Sisneros. And if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and repeat your name.
I, Jose Sisneros.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or a purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
As Chair of the Board of Trustees.
As Chair of the Board of Trustees.
Of the State Bar of California.
Of the State Bar of California.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Justice. You're welcome. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Have a great meeting.
Chair Stallings, I think we'll take a five-minute break. Excuse me, Chair Sisneros.
Yes, please.
Take a five-minute break to get the room back together.
Five minutes. Very nice. We'll be meeting in three weeks.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. We will now recommence our Board of Trustees meeting, and with that, Board Secretary Sharon, can you please take the role?
Yes. Barahona?
Present.
Buena Ventura?
Present.
Sisneros?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Gore?
Here.
Grande?
Here.
Harrison, not present. Huser?
Here.
Giorgiello?
Here.
Soell?
Present.
Stevens?
Present.
Tony?
Present.
Trejo?
Present.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And I would like to first take an item out of order in advance, just most recent chair. Brandon Stallings up to the mic, please.
Thank you, Chair Sisneros, Vice Chair Tony, and Board Member Giorgiello. Congratulations on the oaths that you just took, the public service that you're about to undertake, and for the heart and the soul that I know that each one of you possess for the work of the State Bar. Kind of my -- I don't think I can add anything to what Justice Jenkins said about the three of you, but what I can do is offer just my historical perspective on especially Vice Chair Tony and Chair Sisneros. And that is when, it's kind of a confession, but when public members started to come onto the Board in droves, I had some concerns. And in a profession that is oftentimes isolationist and elite, I think there's this natural fear of having non-lawyers be put into positions of power over lawyers. And I approached that wrongfully, but during conversations, during meetings, during the after-hour dinners, I really got to know the heart of our public members, and especially Chair Sisneros and Vice Chair Tony. And what started out, I think, as a distrust really grew into a trust that I had for you, for the heart that you have for this profession. And I absolutely look forward to see how you continue to transform this noble profession. And I'm blown away by the public members on our Board, the lawyers on our Board, who give so much of their time, energy, talent, and efforts, take time away from loved ones and from, you know, from your hobbies, your pursuits, your travels. All of that has meaning, all of that, all of that being poured into this State Bar, I hope you know, is worthwhile work. And so I applaud the efforts. I applaud your service in the coming year. If I can be of any help, please let me know. I will continue to advocate for rural counties, for access to justice in those rural counties, especially those who are underserved, underserved populations, and will absolutely continue to advocate for California-registered schools, for California-accredited schools, and for the very diverse people group that they reach out to. And I will be praying for each one of you. This is an enormous responsibility, but each one of you are well-equipped to handle that load and to handle that responsibility and the expectations and the late-night calls. And if you ever need to reach out to me, just try to keep it before 10:00. But I am always available by phone, especially if you want to complain about Jose. There's not going to be a lot to complain about, but you'll have my shoulder to cry on. But Chair, Vice Chair, new Board Members, golden oldie Board Members, I look forward to seeing your work with an emphasis from afar, and absolutely am excited to see what you, along with our new Executive Director, Laura Enderton Speed, what you all do. So I applaud you, I applaud your work, and may God bless you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Brandon, and I'm glad we were all here to witness your offer of help for, unlimited offer of help for years to come. And with that, I'll move on to the Chair's report. This is my chance to say a few words. So thank you, first of all. I would like to thank Supreme Court Justice Jenkins for presiding over our swearing-in ceremony. It was a tremendous honor to have you, Justice, join us today. And I would like to thank the Chief Justice and the entire California Supreme Court for their faith in me as the first public trustee and non-attorney to serve as Chair of this Board in the State Bar's 98-year history. I also want to thank our good friend, Brandon Stallings, who we just heard from, for his considerable contribution as Board Chair these last two years. I was honored to serve with you, Brandon, and for your time as a trustee, all told, for a full decade. Brandon, through your work leading this Board, you exemplified the highest example of true public service. You made this agency stronger, and you made the Central Valley proud. It's been my great honor to serve with you. And to our new Vice Chair, Mark Tony, also a public trustee and non-attorney, I look forward to working with you. I appreciate the vast skill sets you bring to the table, and I look forward to our partnership and service to this Board. And to the Board, all of you, thank you for all your work. This is not a body you join to sit back and relax. It requires much effort and dedication, and you all display that in these meetings and in all the homework that you do in between these meetings. I also want to congratulate and welcome our new trustee, David Giorgiello. We look forward to serving with you, David. For me, as someone who's immersed himself in public service for decades, as much as I'm honored by this appointment, I know the responsibility of it is immense, significant, and profound. The work we do as Board Members is incredibly impactful to the people we serve, the public, the bar exam applicants, all the California attorneys and those seeking free legal aid from the over 100 nonprofit providers that we help fund each year. And our mission is to protect the public, and that is what we must do. That focus will guide my leadership as Chair and will continue to shape all the decisions of this Board. The composition of this Board includes seven attorney members and six non-attorney members, a balance that ensures both attorneys' and the public's perspectives are fully and fairly represented. The excellence of my fellow trustees, attorneys and non-attorneys alike, gives me great confidence in the work ahead. My own journey as Treasurer of the City and County of San Francisco has been centered on safeguarding resources, ensuring accountability, and advancing financial fairness. I see my role here in the same way, protecting Californians by making sure the State Bar fulfills its regulatory mission with integrity, competency, and transparency. In recent years, we've taken critical steps to restore trust and strengthen oversight. I was privileged to chair the committee that recommended reforms that led to the creation of the Client Trust Account Protection Program, a direct response to the revelations exposed by the Tom Girardi matter. And today, we are a changed agency. The Client Trust Account Protection Program is doing what it is meant to do, increasing attorney compliance with their client trust account reporting duties while protecting the public from those who abuse that responsibility. Our work has shown that we can appropriately go after attorneys who do the greatest harm, which even includes high-profile attorneys who are engaged in significant misconduct. At the same time, we are educating attorneys about their responsibilities while also enacting and pursuing reforms that increase fairness in the attorney discipline system. However, we do face real challenges ahead. The February 2025 Bar Exam underscored the need for this Board and our colleagues on the Committee of Bar Examiners to ensure the admissions process is fair, reliable, and worthy of the applicants who dedicated years of their lives preparing for the California Bar Exam. We must learn from that experience and do better, and we will. In the coming year, I'm committed to drawing on the deep expertise of my colleagues on this Board and the dedication of the State Bar staff as we continue this important work. I am humbled by the trust placed in me and energized by the work before us. I look forward to serving alongside each of you as we uphold the State Bar's mission to protect the public. Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you for joining me here today. With that, we'll go on to the exciting matter of our Board of Committee assignments, which we will put on the screen right now, and take a look at them. They're largely unchanged, but there have been a few minor changes. So you'll see in front of us the three Board of Trustees Committee assignments. The Executive Committee now will be comprised of me, Mark Tony, Sarah Good, Arnold Soell, Cynthia Grande, and an ex officio of our Executive Director. Finance Committee, Trustee Soell, Trustee Barahona, Trustee Gore, Trustee Grande, and Trustee Trejo. Audit Committee, Vice Chair Tony, Trustee Stevens, Trustee Buena Ventura, Trustee Harrison, and Trustee Huser. And with that, we'll move on to the next item. Oh, we need a motion. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Stevens, second by Trustee Grande. Roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison, not present. Huser?
Aye.
Giorgiello?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Sisneros?
Aye.
With 12 ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now on to the consent calendar. We've advanced notice that the following items will be pulled from the consent calendar, 5.1, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7. And I would like to ask if there's any members of the Board that would like to pull any additional items from the consent calendar. If not, then the following items that have not been pulled can be approved as a combined item. Do we have a motion and a second?
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Moved by Trustee Soell, seconded by Trustee Gore. Roll call vote.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison, not present.
Huser?
Aye.
Giorgiello?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
With 12 ayes and 0 nays, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now we'll address the pulled items, starting with 5.1.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Board of Trustees. Congratulations, Chair and Vice Chair, on your swearing-in and your new roles. Item 5.1 is an informational item, and it is the Annual Outside Counsel Spent Report for the calendar year 2024, which Office of General Counsel began reporting following the State Auditor's Report in 2017. As noted in the accompanying staff report materials, the total outside counsel spent for 2024 was $1,156,351.31, which includes $132,372.87 for board-directed investigations and workplace investigation services, and $1,288,724 in legal representation in connection with various lawsuits as well as legal advice. All of these expenditures were approved by the board. In terms of legal representation, Office of General Counsel continues to provide, as much as possible, a full array of legal services to the state bar. As noted earlier, the outside counsel spend includes expenditures for board-directed investigations and other investigations that should be conducted externally. For legal representation, not including investigations, outside counsel is retained for primary two reasons. First, to access outside counsel specialized services such as bankruptcy, insurance, copyright, specialized contracting, labor, and employment, as well as to retain firms in other states where state bar was sued and where it was necessary to have separate counsel for named defendants in lawsuits. Second reason is due to insufficient internal resources and the volume of legal work within the office. Just to provide you some context, last year there were about five attorney vacancies within OGC, in addition to two attorneys being out on parental leaves for a part of the year, out of total of 18 attorneys within the office. Given the volume of work, we resorted to engaging qualified legal resources. When we engage legal resources, we very much try to engage them at government rates or at negotiated rates. That's my presentation to you. Happy to answer any questions that I can that would be appropriate to answer in this public forum.
Do any trustees have any questions? Please.
I just had a comment, which is, I think this is remarkably low, and I think it's a testament to the excellent job that our General Counsel does, to do very much with not a lot. Given the breadth of litigation, legal exposures, investigations, all of the things that her office handles, this is incredibly modest. So kudos to you, Eileen.
Thank you, Trustee Good. Well spoken. Any other trustees? Trustee Soell.
Just real quick, Eileen, how does this compare, this two prior years?
This, last year's, you know, this report covers 2024. This is, last year, our spend was slightly higher. Our total spend was $1,188,454. The year before, it was actually lower, still over $1 million, was $1.1 million. A big chunk of all of those expenditures included the investigation-related services, and during this time period, the vacancies within OGCs were still high.
And is our expectation that will be roughly, projections roughly about the same for this year?
If not, a little more, given the additional expenditures we've had.
Understood. Right. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If not, I'll need a motion and a second.
I'll move the item.
Actually, Chair, this is an informational item.
This is informational.
Yes, so there is no motion, but it's a report out to you.
Thank you for the correction. Please go right ahead, Chair. Vice Chair Tony.
I really appreciate you just taking the time to go through the expenses. I also, like Trustee Good, think they're very reasonable, and it's good just for all of us to know that. And I just like items over $1 million not to be on the consent calendar without having attention drawn to it. And I feel that we have done our job as trustees by looking at it, commenting on it, getting an explanation. I am completely satisfied. Thank you very much, Eileen.
Thank you again. And unless there's anything else, we'll conclude that information item and move on to the next item, an item that will require a vote. Item 5.5, Proposed Amendments to Rule 9.42 of the California Rules of Court, Rules of the State Bar Related to the Practical Training of Law Students and Law Office Study Programs, Rules 3.1 to 3.10, 4.29, and New Rule 3.11. And Appendix A of the Rules of the State Bar, Return from Public Comment and Request for Approval and Submission to the California Supreme Court. And I believe this item is being presented by Staff Attorney David Lane.
There we go. Hopefully you can hear me now. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. I am presenting the item having to do with the latest, most recent return from public comment of the proposed rules revisions that govern the practical training of law students and the law office study programs. The board has seen these rules several times before. This is the latest iteration that the board approved to go out for public comment. Quick reminder, the Practical Training of Law Students Program, which, if the rules revisions are approved, will be called the Certified Law Student Program, allows students to get practical experience by practicing law under the supervision of an attorney, often, for example, in a clinical program in law school. Perhaps most significantly, the rules revisions expand the eligibility for the program from just JD students and graduates to law office study participants and LLM students, although it does exclude students studying under a judge in a judge's chambers. That had to do with concerns about potential conflicts of interest that were raised by the Supreme Court with respect to a previous iteration of the rules revisions. The new rules also require the students to notify their supervisors of possible conflicts of interest so they can be addressed and then amend, clarify, specify certain deadlines. There were 11 comments received during the public comment period. One commenter disagreed, although that commenter was anonymous and did not state a reason for the disagreement. Eight commenters agreed, and then two took no position. The Law Office Study Program, a quick reminder, this allows applicants to get some or all of the four years of education they're required to have to take the bar exam under the supervision of a licensed California attorney or a California judge. And the rules revisions, perhaps most significantly, allow more flexibility in that they can now study synchronously, that is, at the same time, but remotely, by Zoom, Teams, other remote technology, although the rules do maintain an in-person supervision requirement as well. The rules clarify the guidelines for both participants and supervisors, and then provide for more structured oversight in terms of reporting attestations by supervisors, things of that nature. 18 comments were received. Four disagreed, although two of those disagreed in general with the existence of the Law Office Study Program. Another had concerns about allowing remote study. And then the fourth did not state the reason for disagreeing. Seven commenters agreed with the changes. Four agreed if they were modified, and then three took no position. And the Committee of Bar Examiners took a look at the comments, agreed to send the rules to the board, which now has the option of approving the rules revisions and submitting them to the Supreme Court for its review and approval.
All right. Thank you for that explanation, Adam. Any questions from trustees? Trustee Good.
Thanks for that presentation, Mr. Lane. Appreciate it. Just a little bit of background for other trustees who may not have gone to law school. I think what would become the Certified Law Student Program is a really important and key aspect of legal education. I myself benefited from it, you know, some 35 years ago, of doing clinical work under the supervision of a law professor and getting to go to court and do a trial, you know, as well as doing good for the public. You know, as we know from the Access to Justice Report, there's an acute need for lawyers in California. This offers some people the opportunity to have a lawyer with very specific and excellent supervision, oversight of a law student to kind of do it. So I think these clinical programs in law school are critical to bringing along law students to understanding their craft and the profession, not simply reading books and interacting with people and doing good. So I support all of those changes to this rule, and I also support expanding it to include LLM students. And just for folks here, an LLM student is typically somebody who was admitted to the bar in another country and came to this country and did a one-year LLM degree in U.S. law and then is geared to take a U.S. state bar exam. So they're akin to other law students, and I don't think they should be treated differently. They should be afforded the same opportunity to get clinical experience, the same way that folks in a traditional three-year JD program should get. What I do have questions about, and I'm interested in delving into this a little bit more, is the, let me get the name right, the LSOP. And, Mr. Lane, I think it'd be helpful if you spoke to us a little bit about how many people do that a year, because I understand it's very small. And then, two, my concern is really, I spend a fair amount of time thinking about how to bring along law students and lawyers in the first years of their practice, bring them along so that they can become, you know, competent and great attorneys. And I'm a little concerned about the mix between remote and in-person. I'm a very strong believer in in-person training for folks right out of law school. You know, in your first or second or third years out of law school, I think it's very important not to learn over Zoom how to be a lawyer, but rather to get some in-person aspects to it. And I thought the in-person component here was really, really low. So if you could, one, give us the metrics on how many people do it, and, two, walk us through those requirements more precisely, I think that might be helpful to sort of guide the discussion. Thanks.
Sure. So I don't have the numbers in front of me with respect to your first question. You're correct that it's low, but I just don't have the precise numbers, so I can get that for you. With respect to the requirements, so under the current rules, which lay out the requirements weekly, in order to receive credit for a year of study, the student has to study at least 18 hours a week, minimum of 48 weeks, or for a half-year of study, and this is going to be more analogous to the new rules, 18 hours a week for 24 weeks. So that's 432 hours of study for six months. The rules provide that the attorney or judge must supervise the student personally at least five hours per week. You know, one could query what personally means. If synchronous, remote would count, but that's the way the rules were written. Now, to receive those 432 hours of credit for a six-month period, the applicant has to study for at least 72 hours per month for six consecutive months. So it's gone from a weekly requirement to a monthly requirement, which provides a little bit more flexibility for the student and their supervisor. Let me make sure I get this right. So the synchronous, in-person, or remote study has to be at least 20 hours per month, okay, for those six months. So 120 hours. At least 10 of those 120 hours have to be in-person. And so the bulk of the synchronous hours may be via remote technology.
So just to summarize, 10 hours have to be in-person out of 120 hours?
That's correct, for every six-month period.
This breaks me, is very low. I'm uncomfortable with that, but I'm interested in what other trustees think.
Any other trustees want to weigh in? Yes, Trustee Buena Ventura.
Could you tell us what the limitations are for, let's say, like a certified law clerk? What can they do in terms of, or maybe what they can't do? Are they able to do everything from litigating motions all the way up to trial work, to actual trial, and just have, let's say, the 10 hours of training?
So the 10 hours, we were talking about the Law Office Study Program, and so that is working toward meeting the four-year educational requirement to take the bar exam. The Certified Law Students Program, which I think you're referring to, that has to do with students either in the Law Office Study Program or LLM students or JD students or graduates in some cases, practicing law under the supervision of an attorney. So two separate programs. The Certified Law Students, under the rules, can practice law virtually to the same degree as a licensed California attorney, under the close supervision of a California attorney, who essentially has to sign off and take responsibility for the work product. And there are other requirements, you know, notifying the client of what's happening, things of that nature.
Yes, Trustee Soell.
Trustee Good, I know you said you were interested in what other trustees thought, but I think I'm going to ping this back to you and say, what seems like, in your mind, to be the metric in terms of in-person? Is it, could it be hours? Could it be some percentage of their time? I'm just wondering what your thoughts are here.
You know, just ballparking, like 50%, maybe 40%, but something much more significant. And I see Ms. Herschewitz, I think, is going to have those statistics I asked for.
Not yet, but I will have them soon. I've pinged several people. But I did want to clarify one thing about the Law Office Study Program. It is just that, a study program. You are not to be employed by the person who is supervising you, and it is not sort of, as we think of the way people used to get certain, get admitted to the bar, where it was a pure apprenticeship program. And in your comments, I hear a lot of that sort of ringing in my head. There is, this is a There is, this is a, this is a study program, and so, and so a big portion of it is sort of, is having conversations and, and assignments about torts and contracts and criminal law. I absolutely imagine that there are components of it where you are learning by going to court and watching and talking about the case that the lawyer is working on that is supervising you. But there also is that, that study component as well. And so I did want to make sure that we were taking that into consideration in thinking about what the, what the hour requirements would be for something in-person. And this was something that the Committee of Bar Examiners talked fairly extensively about, and really, we're trying to modernize the program. Under the current language of the program, it's been interpreted as requiring you to be physically in the office during regular business hours with the lawyer. And as Justice Jenkins and I were talking about this morning, so many sentences end with, and then came COVID. And so we have started modernizing how we do things, and we thought, well, this is really, the idea behind the Law Office Study Program, among other things, is to provide this alternative way to have, to have, have the study of law accessible to people who don't have, you know, can't sit sort of through the traditional day programs at law schools because of other obligations, because of costs, because of a variety of things. This is a non-traditional program, and to have them, people who are more able to handle a non-traditional program are unlikely to be able to sit, you know, from nine to five in somebody's law office. And so that's where the remote requirement came from. And so that was a lot of what, what Committee of Bar Examiners talked about and why they thought the, the hours, the division of hours was appropriate, sort of based on that understanding and the thought process about what they are and are not doing in a law office study program.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Huza, please, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on that comment, and you said the Committee of Bar Examiners had extensive discussion about that. Did they discuss other percentages? And I think it, it is a little bit challenging to understand that they had extensive discussions, but not have, you know, some of the benefit of that discussion. So maybe you could add a little bit more if they did have a discussion about what makes sense, because certainly there is some element of remote that makes sense. I mean, you know, I'm not sure many legal practitioners spend nine to five in an office these days, so who they would sit with, but was there a discussion about, because 10% seems low, 100% seems high, was there discussion since this is within their purview?
So, so I wish I had a precise answer for you. This, this package of rules was two and a half years, I think, in the making. And as a matter of fact, the, as a reminder, this Board actually approved the package of rules previously. We sent them to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court sent the rules back because they wanted to make sure that we thought about the overlap between a law office study student who was studying in a judge's chambers and the Certified Law Student Program, and what kind of conflict there would be there. And so they sent the rules back, and the Committee of Bar Examiners made changes to address that, that issue and make some other technical changes to the rule package. But as I recall, the, the rule, the rule development started with a small working group of two members of the Committee of Bar Examiners, and the conversation started with, can it be fully remote? And, and then we made some changes and said, no, it can't be fully remote, there has to be some in-person requirement. You can't learn all of it without that in-person requirement. The extent to which, when we went to the full committee, they debated 10% versus 20 versus 50, that I, that I can't recall over the course of the two and a half years that this rule package has. I think it's gone out for public comment now three times. So it's been a, it's been a long time in, in getting to this final point.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone else? Trustee Gore.
Yeah, when I first sort of thought of the concept, I thought of it as an accessibility, those who are low-resourced or who have challenges in their personal and professional life, that they would have access through a program that would allow them to participate. And so, you know, even if there were some hours added on, that seemed reasonable, but anything beyond that, you're back to a more non-accessible program. So it seemed like it was trying to expand the, the number of folks who could participate in a program that was eligible. So I interpret it very much as an excess to, to those who may have restricted opportunities.
I do have some numbers. I was able to discern that currently there are about 80 to 90 participants in the Law Office Study Program.
Yes, trustee Stevens.
And presumably, we have a way to monitor for potential abuse, right? So if either the supervisor or the student are essentially misusing the program, there's, there's a reporting requirement, et cetera, that we can make sure that that's not being abused. Is that accurate?
You're talking about the Law Office Study Program? Yes, that is accurate. There are exams that must be given, there are reports that must be submitted to the state bar, and so the student's progress and the supervision of that progress are monitored.
And just to clarify, I now have the history of the numbers. David is correct. For, for this year and last year, there were about 90 active members in the Law Office Study Program, which was a significant bump, actually, from 2022 and 2023, when there were 20 and 30 numbers, 20 and 30 participants in the program, active participants in the program each of those years. But there were significant numbers of inactive members then, and that basically totaled back up to the 90 number.
Yes, trustee.
So I completely support having a huge chunk of this be remote for accessibility concerns. I'm all on board. But I'm worried about this, this is a program that replaces attending law school, right? I'm, you know, 10%, I, I'm concerned. So I just think it needs to be higher. Do I have a magic number? No. It shouldn't be more than 50% for sure. And certainly, the requirement of nine to five in the office is antiquated, to say the least. But I have a problem supporting this, the way that it's written, but I completely support the Certified Law Student Program, just the way it is.
Okay, so my understanding is, we are now at a point where this has gone out for public comment, is returned, and we are voting today just simply to, whether or not to pass this forward to the Supreme Court or not. If that vote does not pass, then we would have to take this matter up on another agenda and put it back out for public comment if we so choose.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just as a reminder, that, that we have now authorized, not just the, so, not just the registered law schools, but we have, for those law schools that the state, that the Committee of Bar Examiners accredit, so California-accredited law schools, are now authorized to be 100% remote. And so to the extent that this is a replacement for, for a law, a law school study program, there is that equivalency there, and I just wanted to, to make sure to mention that.
Trustee Tony.
Donna, I really appreciate you adding that, because I had forgotten that, now that you remind me, and that helps with perspective. I really appreciate this discussion. I asked for this to be taken off consent because I didn't understand it. I've never been to law school, I've never taken the exams, so I, I have an experience gap that I needed to hear from my attorney colleagues to even know how to think about it, how to understand it. Very much appreciate everybody's participation.
Trustee Solow.
In, in passing this, if it passes, it's passed sort of verbatim, or can we pass it in, and say that there was an extensive discussion about in-person, that in-person percentage, and ask the Supreme Court to, to possibly also take a look at that?
Alina.
I think that the Board could include a resolution that would raise the issue to be considered by the Supreme Court, that we could include in the petition. But typically, from my experience, the more that the Board and the deliberating bodies can determine and that we could include in the petition, it is much more helpful for the Supreme Court to consider and promulgate rules around. But as mentioned earlier, if the hours in the LOS program are increased to, from 10 hours to any higher number, it is considered to be a substantial change to the rules that would require going out to public comment, and likely would also need to go back to the CBE.
Any other questions or comments? Trustee Huza.
Just one procedural comment. I appreciate the Chair's comment that all we're voting on is passing this along to the Supreme Court, but yet our obligation to the public trust, as we've spent a great deal of time this morning talking about, is to deliberate these things. So I do appreciate that the request is somewhat simple here, to pass it along, but we do have an obligation to, you know, address these things. I just wanted to point to that, you know, procedural issue here, because these things come to us, and I very much appreciate trustee Tony, who had a question saying, I'd like to hear from the lawyers. We spent time on it, we addressed it, and so I do think it is important to have these kinds of discussions, and if it does mean we have to go back out for public comment or return to the CBE, if we think that's important, that is something we should do. I mean, here, you know, I don't know how the vote will come out, but it isn't just a, we pass this along because the CBE and public comment decided it.
Thank you. Great clarification, trustee Huza. I just, of course, whether this motion passes or fails will determine what the next steps are. Trustee Good.
Just a question, do we have to take this as a package deal, or can we separate out the Certified Law Student Program?
Counsel.
And vote on them separately?
From the voting perspective, procedurally, you could separate them. It's my understanding, and I have to check with maybe Donna or Erica, that there was a preference to see these rules jointly, so it may, we may need to wait to submit the rules to the court.
The rules are packaged together because there's a, there's a tie, but not one that would prevent them, in my mind, from being separated at this point. The tie being, the tie between them being that we are amending the, well, now I'd have to think about it. So we're amending the Law, the Law Office Study Program rules to specify, or amending the Certified Law Student rules to specify that Law Office Study students can be part of the program, the, the part of the, the, part of the Certified Law Student Program. I think we can separate them out and have the Law Office Study Program rules stand on their own and, and make any changes. You know, if you all want to change that requirement, send it back to CBE, send it out for public comment, I think we can do that. David, I'm not sure if you are scanning through the rules as we are having this conversation to see if there is any, if there's anything in the, in the Certified Law, in the Certified Law, Certified Law Student Program, changing the name in it, so I'm trying to get used to the new name, getting, if there are any language in there that would be problematic if that moves forward by itself. I don't think there is.
I don't think so either. Both sets of rules clarify that participants in the Law Office Study Program who are studying under a judge may not participate in the Certified Law Students Program. But I don't see how that would prevent the two sets of rules from going separately.
Yeah, as long as it makes that clear in both sets, then I think we're fine.
So if someone wanted to make a motion that perhaps were to do that, it sounds like that would be allowed.
I'm happy to make that motion for the Certified Law Student Program.
Would you mind restating it, just so everyone's clear?
Yeah, I'd make a motion for approval of these rules as-is with respect to the Law Student Certification Program only.
Does that seem clear?
Yeah, we can modify it here.
Time for word crafting.
So the attachments should be C through F, I believe. Reference in those, yeah.
And then I believe you also need modifications to the schedule resolution. It would be to, Alina, would it be to exclude the?
Yes, I'm pulling that up.
Okay. Maybe you just add in there with regard to the Certified Law Student Program, right, adopting the proposed revision set forth in Appendix A, a set forth in Attachment I and J with regard to the Certified Law Student Program, something like that?
Mm-hmm.
I might suggest adding solely with regard to the Certified Law Student Program.
Actually, I'm sorry, put it back, and I'd just add, and all portions of Appendix not expressly modified. Okay.
Does this wording suit the maker of the motion?
Yeah, looks good. I'll move it.
Any second. Motion by trustee Good, second by trustee Buenaventura. Any more comments, discussion, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Buenaventura.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Gore.
Nay.
Grande.
Aye.
Harrison, not present. Huza.
Aye.
Giello.
Abstain.
Solow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo.
Nay.
Sisneros.
Aye.
With nine ayes and two nays, the motion carries.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. We'll now move on to item five.
If I could make a suggestion or question, we, we may still want to take action on the remaining part of this and discuss a number of hours. If we're going to send this back out, we should send it back out with the, with what we want people to react to, not just send it back out and say, we didn't like it. I think that's our duty and responsibility. So I don't know, is that okay, Chair?
My question would just be, is that considered part of this item, or we have to schedule it for a Or we have to schedule it for a new meeting?
No, that could be considered here.
All right.
And I would just, procedurally, whatever hour percentage, time that you want to put in there, just I would have it sent back to CBE for consideration before going back out for public comment.
Okay. Then I guess I will now be looking for a maker of a motion that would do exactly that, including what increase to the percentage of in-person time would be included. And then we'll take a vote and see if it passes.
I'm happy to make that motion for the CBE to consider what percentage would be appropriate between 30% to 50% and get their input on that.
So do we have the ability to craft a motion here? Do we want to do that on the screen?
Yes.
We'll need to to vote on it, right?
Chair, may I make a suggestion? Yes, we can do that. Would it be helpful to move on to the next item?
Sure.
We'll prepare it. You can come back to it at that time to take a vote.
Trustee, did you have an item?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
That sounds like a great idea. All right, moving on. Item 5.6, Proposed Amendments to the Rules of Procedure of the State Bar of California, Division 5, Chapters 1 and 2, Modification of Probation Conditions and Probation Revocation Proceedings, Return from Public Comment and Request for Adoption. We'll be hearing from Program Manager Michelle Harmon. Hello, Michelle.
Hello. I'm Michelle Harmon. I manage the Office of Case Management and Supervision, which was previously known as the Office of Probation. This item considers some changes in the wording of the State Bar Rules of Procedure that would expand which offices can make and respond to motions regarding the conditions of discipline and motions to revoke probation. Previously, the supervising attorney in the Office of Case Management and Supervision handled these motions. However, currently, due to the reduction in force, there's not an attorney on staff in this office. The Office of Chief Trial Counsel is able to absorb this work. So the modifications of the rules would allow this flexibility for the staff in OCTC to be able to respond to motions and modify disciplinary conditions. At the May meeting, this board authorized sending the rule changes out for a 45-day public comment period. During that time, the State Bar received nine public comments. Five of these were left entirely blank, and four submissions were complete or partially complete. There's a table attached to the agenda items summarizing the responses. But in short, when there was disagreement to the changes, the narrative comments indicated a concern with the State Bar being involved with attorney discipline at all or being too lenient on attorneys, not specifically about which office handles these matters. So after considering the public comment, staff recommend that the rules be adopted as proposed at the May board meeting and as outlined in the attachments to this item. You can find both the red line and the clean versions as Attachments A and Attachment B.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Are there any questions? Or should we be, I assume there's a drafted resolution? Any discussion, or do we hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you very much. Any second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Good, second by Trustee Buena Ventura. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Gore.
Aye.
Grande.
Aye.
Harrison, not present. Huser.
Aye.
Giogio.
Aye.
Soell.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo.
Aye.
Sisneros.
Aye.
With 12 ayes and 0 nays, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item 5.7, Proposed Amendments to Repeal the Rules of the State Bar Title VI, Division IV, Article V, Meetings of the State Bar, Division I, Chapter IV, Responsibilities of Officers, Division IV, Rule 6.91, Offices of the State Bar of California, and Division IV, Article IX, Referendum to All Licensees, An Amendment to the Rule of Procedure of the State Bar, 5.441, Return from Public Comment and Request for Adoption. Sharon, take it away.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, it's still morning. This item is the return from public comment on proposed amendments to the State Bar rules. The changes were approved for circulation early in May and are intended to repeal outdated provisions in Title VI and update one procedural rule for consistency. These provisions are considered obsolete because they relate to functions that existed prior to the 2018 separation of the State Bar's associational roles and the formation of the California Lawyers Association. Since that time, the State Bar has functioned solely as a regulatory agency, and these rules no longer align with its current structure or responsibilities. As a reminder, the proposed repeals include Article V, which governed membership meetings that have not occurred since 2018, Chapter IV on Responsibilities of Officers, which refers to former positions such as president and treasurer that no longer exist, and they are now covered in the Board Policy Manual, Rule 6.91, which distinguishes between a main and branch office, a concept that does not reflect current operational practice, and Article IX, which outlines a referendum process that is no longer in use. The item also proposes a technical update to Rule of Procedure 5.441, which governs petitions for reinstatement. It removes a fixed dollar amount and instead references the schedule of charges and deadlines to ensure accuracy as fees change over time. These amendments were circulated for a 45-day public comment period. Five comments were received with two partially complete. One commenter asked for clarification on why the rules were considered obsolete, and that explanation is included in both the report and this presentation. The remaining comments either disagreed in general, or they did not raise specific issues. For that reason, no revisions are being recommended based on the feedback. Staff recommends adoption of the amendments as circulated. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sharon. Any questions or comments? Or if not, a motion? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Stevens, seconded by Trustee Gore. Roll call vote, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Gore.
Aye.
Grande.
Aye.
Harrison, not present. Huser.
Aye.
Giogio.
Aye.
Soell.
I'm an aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo.
Aye.
Sisneros.
Aye.
With 12 ayes and 0 nays, the motion carries.
Great. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to our next opening business item. Item 6.7, Discussion Regarding the 2024 California Justice Gap Study, the Legal Aid Justice Technology Collaborative, and the Legal Aid Proposal to Create a California Community Justice Worker Program. And it's being presented by Elizabeth Hom and Jennifer Zelnick. Hello, folks. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning. Let me just share my screen.
This is an informational item.
Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good morning, Chair Sisneros and board members. My name is Elizabeth Hom. I'm a Program Director in the Office of Access and Inclusion. I'm joined today by Principal Program Analyst Jennifer Zelnick from our office, who is with you in person. Thank you for the opportunity for a follow-up discussion on our prior presentation on the California Justice Gap Study, as well as discussion on the Legal Aid Justice Technology Collaborative and the Legal Aid Proposal to Create a California Community Justice Worker Program. As you recall, our 2024 California Justice Gap Study's key findings were that the justice gap remains persistent and widespread across all income levels, and that barriers identified in our 2019 study, the knowledge gap and the services gap, continues to leave the majority of Californians without civil legal help. This is exacerbated by the supply of attorneys and legal services available in our state, which is constrained by a market that primarily serves organizations, increasing legal deserts, attorney deserts, limited pro bono services, and a limited scale for strategies to increase the supply of attorneys. So in response to these findings, staff in partnership with the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission developed recommendations that were presented with the Justice Gap Study. I've grouped them into six categories, and over the next two slides, you'll see our current and planned activities, as well as possible additional recommendations that we've developed in the course of engaging with various stakeholders on these issues. We, of course, welcome your additional thoughts and ideas. So the six categories are working with legal aid, to use artificial intelligence to enhance service delivery. As you can see here, our work centers are around the Legal Aid Justice Technology Collaborative, which Jennifer will share more about shortly. Addressing immigration legal needs, including options to expand services and funding for services. Developing a pro bono attorney outreach and engagement plan. Supporting and expanding our Legal Aid Leaders Fellowship Program and other postgraduate opportunities to support our pipeline into legal aid. Exploring outreach and partnership opportunities among legal aid, pro bono attorneys, and lawyer referral services, partnerships with lawyer referral services and public defenders, and with small businesses. One of our first steps in this work is a State Bar Rules Revision Proposal related to the lawyer referral service, which I believe you will be seeing in November. And the last item here is conducting further data collection regarding immigration services, pro bono attorney hours, attorney deserts, lawyer referral services, incubator programs, and grantee data. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
Thanks, Elizabeth, and good morning, trustees. So as Elizabeth mentioned, one of the Justice Gap Study recommendations is to support grantees' use of AI to enhance service delivery. To give some background, since 2023, the Office of Access and Inclusion and the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission have helped grantees to learn about and harness legal technology, including AI, to expand access to justice. As this slide demonstrates, work to date has included convening grantees to learn about AI and tech and attend product demos, organizing a series of pilots and opportunities to implement paid tech tools for free, conducting a survey of grantees' knowledge of, interest in, and usage of tech and AI, and assessing the Office of Access and Inclusion and a pilot group of grantees regarding operational efficiency and tech capacity and usage. Ultimately, this assessment led to the launch of the Legal Aid Justice Tech Collaborative, or The Collaborative. The Collaborative is a statewide effort to support the State Bar of California's 115 grantees in understanding and safely adopting emerging technologies to expand access to justice at scale. The Collaborative will harness the Office of Access and Inclusion as a centralized knowledge hub to serve grantees across the spectrum of tech maturity, staff capacity, and financial resources. Key features of the project include establishing a resource-sharing platform and a community of practice to harness sustainability, fostering opportunities for peer learning and innovation, developing an AI risk management framework, and advancing a tech-enabled pro bono strategy. So now let's shift gears to discussing community justice workers. During the May 2025 board meeting, staff presented an overview of state-level approaches to expand legal services. One such approach is through community justice workers, or CJWs. As a reminder, CJWs are trained non-attorneys who provide limited legal services to individuals who are eligible for legal aid. CJWs are not licensed and may only provide legal services under the supervision of an attorney who is employed by a legal aid organization. Several states, including Alaska, Arizona, Hawaii, and Utah, have active CJW programs. Additionally, in July and August of 2025, the Conference of Chief Justices and the Conference of State Court Administrators, as well as the ABA, adopted resolutions that support or call on jurisdictions to explore CJW programs to expand access to justice. As part of its presentation in May 2025, I'm sorry, next slide, please. Thank you. Staff shared an overview of a legal aid-led CJW proposal. To recap, this proposal was developed by a group of around 10 State Bar grantees, and it seeks to establish a statewide program for CJWs to provide limited scope legal services to low-income Californians under attorney supervision. CJWs would need to be employed by or volunteer for an authorized legal services organization, or LSO. The proposal outlines roles for the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission, as well as the State Bar, which are detailed on this slide. For reasons of time, I'm not going to delve too deeply into those proposals, but I will note that the proposal contemplates a few different policy vehicles that may be necessary to authorize the program, including revisions to the rules of court, an order from the California Supreme Court, or a statutory change. And in the event that the proposal moves forward, staff would contemplate returning to the board for its approval regarding these policy vehicles. Since the May board meeting, staff and the corresponding authors have presented the proposal to the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission and the Program Development and Impact, or PDI, Committee. The PDI Committee then formed a working group to review the proposal and provide written feedback to the authors. The letter will support the development of a statewide CJW program and offer several suggestions to strengthen the proposal. The working group will present its recommendations to the PDI Committee at its October meeting, and the PDI Committee will then seek approval from the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission in early November. So this and the next slide provide a high-level overview of the feedback that the working group plans to share with the authors. So to briefly summarize, on this slide, the working group suggests the authors work with legal aid and community-based organization unions to proactively address any concerns that unions may have about the program's implementation. Union support could preempt concerns about labor relations and demonstrate alignment between attorneys and non-lawyer workers in scaling CJWs statewide. Additionally, the working group will offer suggestions related to ensuring CJWs meet quality control standards. Minimum quality control standards would ensure basic parity among CJWs across authorized LSOs, lower administrative burden for individual organizations, create opportunities for resource sharing, and, most importantly, foster public trust. Some suggestions for standardization may include requiring mandatory ethics and professional competency training and standardizing training and supervision. Another suggestion is to recommend further considering program costs and funding needs. This includes analysis about program costs for the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission, the funding needs of authorized LSOs, and the cost of the proposed five-year evaluation. Additionally, the letter will include limitations against the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission administering a program to non-grantee organizations at present. The working group recommends the authors begin to advocate for a dedicated CJW funding source to enable the commission to administer the program to all interested organizations and to ensure the program serves those Californians with the greatest need, which would include individuals living in rural counties and attorney deserts. In addition to recommending the authors explore a dedicated funding source to support a statewide CJW program, the working group recommends the commission explore statutory and rule revisions as part of the Rules Committee's work. And this would ensure the program addresses service disparities, again, for Californians living in those rural counties and attorney deserts. Another suggestion is mostly technical. The proposal was published in December 2024, which you all know was before the 2024 California Justice Gap Study was released. It therefore cites data from 2019, and the working group provides the authors with suggestions to update relevant data points with figures from the 2024 Justice Gap Study, as well as the 2024 Legal Market Landscape Report. The working group also recognizes that the proposal will likely only advance with Supreme Court and legislative buy-in. It therefore recommends that the authors demonstrate broad community support for a statewide CJW program. Data from focus groups, surveys, Data from focus groups, surveys, or letters of support would demonstrate that low-income and underserved Californians, community-based organizations, and other stakeholders not yet engaged with CJWs see the value of a program. Finally, the working group recommends the authors engage in a more direct conversation about consumer protection and public harm. This should include evidence of the lack of public harm from services provided by trained non-lawyers. So to conclude, we wanted to return to the discussion questions that we posed to the board in May. The 2024 California Justice Gap Study demonstrates that the state's justice gap continues to grow. We also know that the State Bar Strategic Plan Goal II included implementation steps to develop and address the 2019 Justice Gap Study findings. We've also seen that other jurisdictions demonstrate that CJW programs can help expand access to justice. With this in mind, in addition to its current work plans, what additional steps, if any, would the board like the state bar to take?
Thank you, Jennifer and Elizabeth. Very comprehensive report. And with that, we'll open it up to trustees for comments. Trustee Grande.
Thank you for the presentation. One question I have is, what kind of criteria -- and I know, I understand it's in progress, right? But what kind of criteria would be used to determine which LSOs, what type of LSOs would be included as a part of this program?
That's a great question. So the proposal contemplates that any legal services organization, as defined in Business and Professions Code, could participate. So this would include both what we refer to as state bar grantees who receive Interest on Lawyers Trust account funds, as well as legal services organizations who do not receive those funds. However, in consultation with the Office of General Counsel and review of the IOTA statute, at present, we don't believe that it's actually possible for the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission to administer a program to non-state bar grantees because we wouldn't be able to use IOTA dollars to do that work. So that's kind of part of the letter will ask the authors to reconsider that recommendation.
And I'm not familiar with just kind of the process for organizations to receive funds from the IOTA. Could you just share a little bit more about how that process works and who, why someone may not be eligible?
Sure. And Elizabeth, please feel free to jump in at any time. So as I mentioned, the state bar currently funds 115 legal services organizations throughout the state. Those organizations are required to annually apply for funding through the IOTA and Equal Access Fund application process. That process takes place roughly between May and August each year. Programs must submit an application. There are -- the application is quite extensive. It includes an audit component. And organizations essentially must demonstrate that they meet primary purpose and function, essentially that they serve indigent Californians with free civil legal services, or in the case of support centers, that they support qualified legal services providers to do their work. There are numerous reasons why a program might not apply for funding. There are extensive reporting requirements in addition to the extensive application. Elizabeth, I would invite you to jump in.
I think you summarized it quite well. The requirements are governed by Business and Profession Code, and like Jennifer said, we do know that there are many qualified legal aid organizations throughout the state who would qualify for our services but have chosen not to apply for whatever reasons their organization hasn't prioritized that.
Thank you. Thank you. That's really helpful. I think one thing I see, so being that I work in an area of law where I provide direct legal services, I, one of the things that I, I love the idea of CJWs. And when I look at the state bar grantees, right, like you can tell these are very well-known organizations established. I think the, just kind of the red flag that shows up for me is, you know, this is, this is a very, this can do a lot to address the gap. And there are organizations, like the ones that we already work with, I can see would really benefit and be able to impact the communities that we want to impact. But my concern is organizations that might meet the requirement of, under the Business and Professions Code, but maybe wouldn't necessarily do good. That's really concerning for me because every week I'm constantly interacting with people who have worked with an organization that holds themselves out to be a community organization or nonprofit organization. They may have that status, but their staff is not trained adequately. And I just, I would want to, if we're including, I think what I would want to see is that the, just as we have an extensive process for the people that participate, get funding from us, that we would have an equally extensive process. And something also that I tend to see in my line of work is that people, maybe, I could envision that people, if we, if we're not careful with vetting the organizations that participate in the program, that they would get this title, community justice worker, and then leave the organization, and then use that, and then take advantage of the populations that we want to serve. So I would want to see as well how we would deal with people using the credibility of some things, which this is really credible because it would be something that the state bar would be authorizing in a way that there would be some kind of consequence out of doing that, and that that's very clearly stated at the beginning.
I appreciate all of that feedback. I'll also, I want to address everything, so let me know if I'm forgetting anything. To start, I think one thing to note is that the state bar could promulgate more rules and restrictions. That would be under the purview of the state bar's role in this proposal. So that's something to keep in mind. Another thing to note is part of the state bar's role in the proposal is outlined as maintaining a roster of both the authorized organizations, as well as the individual CJWs within each authorized organization, and publishing that. So there are, the proposal does contemplate ways to protect the public. The proposal also specifies that CJWs would have their authorization, their title, restricted to when they're at a particular legal services organization. So if someone becomes an authorized, if someone becomes a CJW authorized by Organization A, they are not allowed to leave Organization A and still be a CJW. So there are mechanisms that the proposal contemplates to try to address some of your concerns, but I think that we share in those concerns as well. And there are very clear roles in the proposal that distinguish the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission and its work from the role of the state bar.
And I mean, I think one thing I would also be curious about or wondering what could be done, because I, you know, there, especially around immigration, because you saw the report, there is a very small number of attorneys in California that do immigration law. You know, same thing with nonprofit organizations. What kind of outreach we could do with organizations that are well-recognized for the work that they do to encourage them to participate? That's something I would, I would want to know more about.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just, if I can take a moment. So for some of you who are new to the board, you may recall that we had Assembly Bill 2958 that essentially sunset several things, including a paraprofessional program that was something different from the community justice worker program that is being proposed by legal aid organizations. That statute sunset effective January 1 of this year. We had some discussions about this towards the end of 2024, early 2025, and at that time, the board decided that this was not something that the board wanted to weigh in at that time. And so as you're seeing, legal aid organizations are moving this forward through this CJW program for which they are seeking input from the state bar's Office of Access and Inclusion and from the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission. This is a discussion-only item, but as we get closer and closer to planning for 2026 and beyond, this could be something that the board wants to revisit. We have anecdotally heard that there is less concern about a CJW-type model than there was about the past proposals. A lot has changed since 2022, so this may be something that the board might want to consider in the future, having more input on beyond just in a consultant-type capacity with these organizations.
Thank you for that input. And I'd like to recognize trustee Huzer.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I think this work is so vitally important for all the reasons you've said. So thank you for all the effort and work that's gone into it. I have two questions, and I'll just ask one of them at a time. On this use of AI, I do agree this could be a really critical area for allowing expanded opportunities for work to get done in an efficient manner in areas with limited budgets. However, my concern is not only are the people receiving these services most in need, but they are also some of the most vulnerable to abuse. And so I know you talked about guidelines being established and all of that, but what I'm really concerned about, we hear from a lot of courts about lawyers just, you know, Googling something or AI-ing something and putting it into briefs, and it's wrong and all of this. And so I just want to make sure that those guidelines are front-ended here, that this population is not used as guinea pigs for trials on AI, and that those guidelines be front-ended in this, and sanctions be, you know, available for anyone who abuses those guidelines, because I think it is such a good opportunity, but I also think it is fraught with danger as, you know, we move into this new area. So that's just a comment. And then the question I had is, you talk about labor implications, and I presume not only is that about union workers, but also about other paraprofessionals, other legal professionals who may be displaced by CJWs. And so it was interesting, Erica's comment, and maybe we need to, you know, tie these two conversations together. But, you know, a number of these populations are served by paraprofessionals who have been doing this for many, many, many years, and, you know, they count on this work themselves. They are also a vulnerable population within the legal profession. And so I wanted to hear from you a little bit about how, you know, this CJW program, you know, makes sure that we are protecting that legal professional group that isn't the lawyers in the profession, but are critical to the service that is provided to these populations.
Well, thank you for those comments and that question. I think you've articulated a lot of really important points and agree with everything that you've said. Yeah, your analysis about working with unions is correct, and we do want to make sure that other groups, such as paralegals and other non-attorneys, are protected and feel included in the process of developing a CJW program. I will also say that I don't necessarily believe that the creation of a statewide CJW program would be a colossal disaster for non-attorneys within the legal services organizations. And in fact, I think it provides an opportunity for future workforce development for those same individuals, where they can skill up and get to do more work that many, many paralegals, for example, want to engage in already. So I think that, of course, we have to tread lightly and be really careful, which is why we want to encourage the authors to engage with unions now. But we do ultimately believe that this is a win-win situation where individuals will have the opportunity to gain and use more skills in addition to attorneys.
Thank you. I saw trustee Good and then trustee Soell.
Thank you for the excellent presentation, and I really appreciate all of the work that Elizabeth and Jennifer and their organization is doing to address, you know, really the shocking widening of the justice gap in California that we saw in the 2024 report, which I think is very much incumbent upon us to try to address. So I really appreciate all of your initiatives and programs. Thank you for that important work. I had two questions about the CJW program. One of them sort of piggybacks on what trustee Grande has already said, which is, I noticed in terms of supervision, there's a fair amount of flexibility that's going to be granted to some of these organizations to determine how the supervision of CJWs works and what that looks like. And for me, ultimately, you know, I want to see really good, close supervision of this to avoid some of the possible dangers that trustee Grande talked about. And also, let's remember, let's just look at immigration. Huge demand for immigration legal services right now. We've seen in the discipline area that folks have put themselves out there as providing immigration services but aren't licensed to practice law. We've seen a lot of people taking advantage of vulnerable populations and discipline being imposed on those folks. So I want to make sure that from a quality perspective and supervision perspective, that we've really thought that through, as well as kind of the training. And then my second question was, I know a couple of other states have adopted these, and I'd be interested in knowing in the future, what are some lessons learned from them? How long have they had these programs in place? And I noticed that there's a proposal that we look at how this went five years from now. That feels very long to me. I would think we would want to look at it in two years to see how it's going, and then course-correct if there are some problems, because I view this as kind of more of a pilot, frankly, than anything else. So I'm a little concerned about not examining it for five years in light of these other concerns. And I also very much appreciated Erica tying this to the paraprofessional issue, because I was wondering about that myself. And then also just want to echo trustee Huzer's comments about AI and us, you know, being very careful about how that's implemented. I know that COAF has been studying AI and also is very mindful about pitfalls with AI sort of baking in implicit bias and trying to avoid that. So there's a lot of, lot of other issues there. So anyway, those are my comments, but thanks for the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Soell.
I'm going to apologize upfront, because I had to step out for a few minutes. And so if you covered this in your presentation or other questions were asked about this before, I just apologize, and I can talk to you offline. But I wanted to sort of zero in also on, first of all, great presentation, but I wanted to zero in also in the immigration space. And sort of looking at the presentation, there were some recommendations about trying to expand, you know, the use of legal aid, as well as to tap into other entities that are doing this work. I spent a lot of time, obviously, up in Sacramento, and I do know that there was money in the governor's budget this year to do more work in the immigration space, money that I think some philanthropic entities are also attempting to try to match. And I'm just wondering if whether or not we, if you're aware of some of that, or we're tapped into any of that from a partnership standpoint.
I can try to address that question, trustee Soell. So the short answer is yes. We do work very closely with the Legal Aid Association of California. We do work very closely with the Legal Aid Association of California, with California Change Lawyers, who administers fellowship-related immigration legal services in rural areas. And as a reminder, we did also receive additional funding through the special session, which did help fund additional immigration legal services. So kind of in concert with those other folks in the immigration landscape, we've been trying to partner with each other to share information, especially with CDSS, who I believe received the funding, the additional funding through the special session this year. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. But I think the short answer is yes, we are partnering with them. We also would like to look more into the use of accredited reps in the immigration space. That is a federal program that allows non-attorneys to help represent folks in immigration matters. And so wanted to see how we could support expansion of that in California specifically.
Maybe we can just talk maybe just a little bit more offline about, because I'm thinking about some other groups I know that are in this space that could also be, I think, helpful here. And so we can just talk offline about that. But my second question had to do with, I think, when I was walking in, one of the recommendations had to do with possibly working more with the legislature on some of these issues. And I'm just wondering whether or not, if you could maybe just expand on that a little bit more in terms of what that might look like, and whether or not that's something that maybe the Legislative Liaison Committee might need to weigh in on as well.
I can take this if that's helpful. So what we were talking about, I think, trustee Sewell, when you came in, is that there was a bill, as you may recall, AB 2958, that essentially sunset a lot of the work that was happening in a familiar space. So that includes the paraprofessional program and so forth. That statutory prohibitions ended effective January earlier this year. And so the question for the board is, about a year ago, the board decided to not pursue anything in this space. And that's why you're seeing this proposal, not from the state bar, but from legal aid organizations. And so I believe, my understanding is that they are moving these things through the legislature, or will be moving these things through the legislature, and they've had some informal conversations for right now. But if the state bar wanted to take a more active voice in this space beyond discussing with these organizations about how it would work if it was ultimately adopted with the state bar being involved in a regulatory oversight capacity, but take a more affirmative voice as far as trying to move this forward with the legislature, that's something that certainly the board could consider for 2026 as one of its legislative priorities.
Yeah. Chair Cisneros and vice chair Tony, I would suggest that maybe we revisit this and take another look at how we might get involved with this from a legislative standpoint.
I think I'm hearing a lot of interest in this discussion today, so we will keep that on the agenda. Yes, trustee Barahona.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you again, Elizabeth and Jennifer. This feels to me incredibly critical. So I guess my question is, what's the appetite currently as it stands with the Supreme Court in sort of building this legislative buy-in?
Erica, do you want to?
Yeah, I'll take that one. I'm not sure we know the answer to that right now. I think that we would need to have all of those conversations, again, assuming the board, it sounds like the board is interested, so we would start having those preliminary conversations now.
Yeah, I think this is a huge opportunity, and I concur with all of the comments around that my colleagues have shared about ensuring that we're doing this with a sense of diligence and sort of careful crafting and understanding that we do not want to take advantage of vulnerable populations and doing that with a lot of dignity and respect. And I think that we should have a role in having a more affirmative voice in the development of this to a certain degree, because I think our work is to ensure that we're closing that justice gap that continues to grow. And I think we can have a real influential role in being partners, at least in lockstep with legal aid organizations, that are going to be doing a lot of work to get this across the finish line. And I think we should be partners in that process. And I think maybe want to outline those parameters, but I think we do have a role to play here.
Yes, trustee Gore.
And I would just lift up, I know there's an intense focus on our immigrant communities, but I think housing and tenants' rights, in particular, with some of the moratoriums being lifted, seem to require the same resources. And then I anticipate that health care and disability rights are going to become significant and need additional resources. So I'd lift up those voices if possible.
Yes, trustee Tony.
I very much appreciate the presentation, the thinking. I think that as we think about the concept of justice gap, we have to remember that it's related to other bigger things happening in society. So I'm not surprised, I'm distressed but not surprised, that it's growing. I think it is part of the increasing wealth gap. And when you look at the wealth gap issues, there's really two directions in which to address a gap. A lot of times, we spend a lot of time looking at the floor and how do we raise the floor, okay, to bring the gap, lessen the gap. There's also, there's a ceiling, too. And there's also a question of how do we address the accumulation also of wealth? I'm saying that to say that this is extremely important. In the future, we may want to think about, what are the obligations of the law firms that have increased and continue to increase in resources and wealth? What are their pro bono obligations? Okay? You know, I know that the concept of pro bono is a common one. And what are ways to think about meeting the obligation that go beyond the volunteer of time? Because it may be that some of these large law firms, they may not have an expertise in immigration practice for defending individuals, okay? That just may not be their specialty. And so I don't know that I would ask them to do pro bono work for individual immigrants. But I wonder whether there's some way to think about, you know, there's some sort of fund you can contribute to in lieu of having that kind of expertise? Anyway, I'm just saying, I think we should think about it, have discussions about it, and just explore it in the future.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I feel like we've had a great presentation and a lot of comment, which ensure that we will be returning to this topic again. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now I believe we are in a place where we can return to item 5.5 and finish out that item with the help of Donna Hirschwald.
I think Sharon, you've got a resolution to add? Let me just read this. Further resolved that the Board of Trustees sends the rule revisions related to the Law Office Study Program back to the Committee of Bar Examiners to request, that's a little awkward, to consider the percentage split between in-person and remote supervision and revise the proposal submitted to the board to require at least 30%, but not more than 50% of the supervision be in-person and not remote, and authorize the CBE to circulate the rules for public comment if appropriate.
Very helpful. Any thoughts?
Just an edit, I would say to request consideration of.
Thank you.
And that consideration would be to consider it and also consider any revision, as opposed to, meaning, should we remove that comma before "and revise"?
And just to be clear, the way I read the tail on that, to circulate for public comment if appropriate, to me, sounds like that the Committee of Bar, if the Committee of Bar Examiners makes the change somewhere between 30 and 50%, that it can go out for public comment without coming back to the board. I just want to make sure that everybody has the same understanding.
Yes. Thank you for that explanation. Are there any comments, questions, or a motion?
Question, please. What's the stuff above the further resolve? So we don't need that stuff, right? Get rid of it. We already voted on that, no?
That's the part you already voted on it. So this is the third resolution on that item.
So we're just voting on the red text right now.
Correct.
So you're going to delete what's ahead of it?
Well, ultimately, you will have, all of that will show up in the minutes, because if you adopt this resolution, you will now have adopted all three resolutions related to this item, the two that are there and this new one.
So this, in other words, what you're saying is this motion will supplant the one we already voted on?
It will attach it in addition to.
May I just?
I'm confused.
So the reason it's further is because we took a break. So if you were to take the motion later, it would have been the further resolved. And the reason you're seeing it is because we keep track of it in one document. So right now, when you would vote on this motion, it would be what is presented. If you want to keep it as a separate, we could do it, too. But in the minutes, it will be part of the same agenda item.
And it will reflect that there were two votes taken on it?
Correct. The votes would be separate.
Okay, fine. Thank you for the clarification. I'm fine.
I'm fine making a motion. Oh, fine.
I just have a question, not so much about the motion, but about the process when this gets sent back to CBE. Not sure how this appears on their docket in terms of how timely they'll take it up. And one of the reasons why I was thinking about this is about our evolving partnership with CBE in terms of the meetings that we're having with them, joint meetings, et cetera. I'm not sure when we're scheduled to have maybe another joint meeting, but I'm actually even wondering whether or not, the next time we have the joint meeting, if it worked out, whether or not this could be something that could be a subject matter of that conversation. But I don't know how that process works.
So I actually meant to mention this yesterday. When we went over the schedule for how we are bringing to the Committee of Bar Examiners and the board repeatedly, the discussion about the future bar exam and the cost-benefit analysis and what that might look like. On that schedule, you may recall, I'm sure you don't, that there were a couple of asterisks there. And the reason those were there, it was for a presentation to CBE in January and to the board in February, is at a staff level, we've had a conversation about whether it might make sense to combine those two into a joint discussion in February. So that would be when the CBE would be receiving and talking about, from their perspective, the final version of the cost-benefit analysis and their final recommendation, and the board seeing that for the first time, doing that as a joint meeting. So we were thinking February would be an opportunity for that, maybe attaching it as a half-day in addition to the board's scheduled meetings. So if the board's scheduled meeting is Thursday or Friday, the Thursday afternoon or Thursday morning would be that joint meeting. So the question is, with the, CBE may want to act on this more quickly than February. And timing-wise, we can still actually get it on the agenda for their October 10 meeting. And so we'll be talking with the chair and vice chair of the Committee of Bar Examiners and see if they want to put it on the upcoming meeting. I suspect that they will.
I would not want to slow that down, so.
Great, thank you. Trustee Gore.
Can I ask another process question? So just to avoid a doom loop here, if they thought the 30% was so far from where they were, could they come back and recommend a different percent, and then we look at that percent, and then we finally get to a percentage? Or is that a possibility? Or will they just be restricted within the band that we're sending?
So I think the addition on that tail on the resolution that said they could submit it for public comment if appropriate is, among other things, if they say, nope, we disagree, it should stay at 10%. Or, nope, we agree it's 10% is low, but we think 30% is too high, and it should be 25%. Because they would be doing something different than you directed, that revision would come to the board before going out for public comment.
Thank you for the process explanation. So we are on item 5.5. I think we have a motion. Was that right? Trustee Good?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. First, motion by trustee Good, second by trustee Buenaventura. Roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buenaventura?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Abstain.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison, not present. Huser?
Aye.
Giorgiello?
Aye.
Sewell?
I'm an aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
With 11 ayes and 0 nays, the motion carries.
Excellent. And now we'll move on to item 6.8, Proposed Amendments to Rule 2.45 of the Rules of the State Bar Regarding Voluntary Resignation: Return from Public Comment and Request for Adoption. This is an action item, and it will be presented by Special Counsel Steve Moad.
Thank you. Thank you. I will try to make this very brief. First, let me be the first to say good afternoon, and also congratulations and welcome to our newest trustee and to our new chair and vice chair. As you know, the 2023 State Auditor Report recommended that the state bar identify any service fees that did not fully cover the costs of providing services and increase those fees to a level commensurate in order to recoup the costs unless it would harm the public's access to the services. The theory, of course, is that raising service fees to fully cover the associated costs of providing those services would minimize the need to request annual fee increases. And this is a function that the state bar performs without charging a fee. So there is a proposal to adopt a fee for this function, and this was sent out for public comment based on the board's prior action. There were only 41 people who commented on the proposal, although, as you can imagine, the 41 people who did submit comments were quite vehement in their opposition to imposing the fee. I will add that many of the fees, or many of the commenters, really seemed to think that this was a, quote, "flip of a switch" that can be accomplished very easily and without much time. And that's really not how this process works. This process includes staff in my office, in my division, as well as staff in the State Bar Court, preparing paperwork that goes to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court has to approve resignations. There is quite a bit of staff time involved from many areas of the bar. And so with that, staff is requesting adoption of this proposal. And if it's amenable, I would cede the rest of my time to myself later when we discuss the CTAP update.
You're so generous to yourself. I'm sorry, Steve, could I just ask you one question? Do you have any idea how many voluntary resignations, what's the volume these days?
I do, although I don't remember to call it offhand. It is in the item which I don't have up.
Or even ballpark?
I want to say it's several hundred per year.
Okay. Trustees Giorgiello, followed by trustee Good.
What's the difference between a voluntary resignation and inactive status?
Great question. Voluntary resignation- Voluntary resignation is a permanent, sort of a permanent retirement, if you will. In order to return from voluntary resignation, there are a number of hoops that need to be jumped through, including potentially taking the bar exam again. And if somebody just transfers to inactive status, that, none of those similar requirements are there. They can, as long as they're voluntarily inactive, they can simply transfer back to active status by submission of a form.
So that's more of a flip to switch, the inactive status?
There's still some work involved with that, but it's nowhere near the level of work required here.
Got it.
We have to make sure they're eligible to transfer back to active.
What was the number, again, of voluntary resignations? I know that was just asked.
I was just looking at.
About 650 on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Yes, Trustee Good.
Thanks for that question, Trustee Giorgiello, because I think it's useful for everybody to hear. Active status is a certain fee. Inactive status also is another fee of more than $100 a year to remain on the roster, so to speak. I appreciate being fiscally responsible and having this program pay for itself, and I appreciate being responsive to the state auditor's concerns. I thought some of the commentators had a really good practical point, and so I'm interested in Mr. Moad and your take on it, which was if an attorney is coming up for retirement, doesn't plan on practicing again, they could voluntarily resign and pay $83, I think. Or they could do nothing and have, you know, things wind their course and they end up being disbarred, you know, for failure to pay their active attorney's fees, right? And so a couple of commentators suggested, why pay $83 when you can pay nothing and achieve kind of the same result? I mean, I suppose you would have a bit of a stain on your record, right, for being disbarred. So I thought that was kind of a good practical point. And I wondered if, and then an ancillary question is, for somebody to not pay and then get disbarred requires some work, right, by OCTC or others to get the disbarment effective, to go to the State Bar Court to do it. And I wondered what those costs might look like as well, just as we looked at it. Thanks.
Yes, great question. So when somebody fails to pay fees, you're correct, it's, you know, a certain amount for active fees, and then I think currently it's 205 for inactive. And so then the voluntary resignation would be 85, is the proposal. And so it's significantly less than them remaining on inactive status, for example, for one more year, although they could choose to do that. Or, as you point out, some people do choose to simply stop paying fees, et cetera. They aren't disbarred as a result of that. They are suspended. It is an administrative suspension, so there is no discipline that results from that unless there's some other discipline-based rule violation, et cetera. But that is simply an administrative action. It does go to the Supreme Court at this point, where we submit a petition to the Supreme Court, say, here's a list of the names that currently has come through the Board of Trustees as well. And then the Supreme Court directs that they be suspended effective July 1 every year. And so that process would happen. They could choose that route. It wouldn't cost them anything. They could avoid the payment, the $85. But as you point out, it would render them ineligible to practice law or suspended rather than resigned. That would be their status essentially until they rectify that suspension.
Trustee Giorgiello.
Just to clarify, so if I just choose not to pay, I decide I don't want to practice law anymore, and I just choose not to pay, I permanently go on suspension, but I'm never disbarred?
That's correct.
So I get the red stamp that says you're not eligible to practice law on your bar page, but you're actually never disbarred. So it purely is administrative?
It is administrative suspension. That's correct.
Just as I would predict, there's a certain number of people who are just going to do that.
And there are some now that do that as well, even without the fee. They just choose to simply walk away.
Trustee, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Tony.
Just to follow this line of, you know, thinking here, someone who is a licensed attorney, who, you know, decides that they don't want to practice anymore, they don't ask for a temporary, where was it again?
Suspension.
No, you don't ask for a temporary suspension.
Oh, to transfer to inactive status?
Inactive, thank you.
Yes.
And then they can do that. They can voluntarily resign and pay a fee, that's what this proposal is anyway. Or they could do nothing. If they do nothing, aren't they obligated to pay the annual licensee fee?
Yes, whether they are active or inactive, they're obligated to pay the annual fee unless they are over 70 years of age and inactive. If you are inactive and over the age of 70 in the year that the fee is due, then you do not need to pay annual licensing fees.
Okay, that's a useful clarification. And, but otherwise, if someone doesn't voluntarily resign, doesn't want to pay the fee, they would, each year they don't do that, have a fee that they're supposed to pay, then they would be suspended? I just want to make sure I follow what would be the consequence.
If they fail to pay their licensing fee, then they would be suspended, administratively suspended. Their status on their profile would say not eligible to practice law, and they would not be eligible to practice law.
And would the obligation to pay renew every year?
Yes, the license fees accrue at the prior, excuse me, at the prior status until it's paid. So conceivably, they would owe several years if they decide to come back.
So let me tell you where I'm going with this. It's something I had asked about earlier. One of the things that some agencies do when there are, when people owe them money is they file liens on property. They do things that allow them to collect. They file, you know, you know, different things. Sometimes it's property, sometimes it's income, you know, stuff like that. And I'm bringing this up because what's being brought up is, you know, the challenges of a rule without enforcement mechanism, without a penalty, a clear penalty for not complying with it. And so, I mean, I, you know, certainly, you know, support what, you know, this proposal. But I wonder whether there is something where we can address what Trustee Good brought up of, you know, if we're going to do this, how do we make it so that it is more attractive to do this than not to do it?
Trustee Buena Ventura.
So let's say I don't pay the fee, and so that means that I'll be suspended. So how hard is it to be unsuspended? Let's say I'm suspended, I don't practice for a while, and I decide I'm going to, I want my license back. How hard is it to undo that?
You would simply have to pay the back fees, which would include noncompliance fees. And if you are suspended, then there's a reinstatement fee as well. And those are all in the Schedule of Charges and Deadlines. And if, for example, it's just that one year, you would owe the unpaid fee plus the noncompliance fee and the reinstatement fee. And once those are paid, you're reinstated.
So there's no formal process, like an application or going through some other screening? It's just paying something?
For nonpayment, that's correct. It's, there's, it's, once it's paid, you are reinstated for 2.2 Attorney Record Verification, CTAP noncompliance, things like that. There is a one-page form we ask people to fill out so that we know they've done all the other requirements. But for nonpayment, it's, there is no form.
Trustees Giorgiello.
So just to recap, the core purpose of this is to recap, is to capture the administrative cost of a voluntary resignation because they're in sufficient volume and it's eating up sufficient resources of the bar. And it's a financial hole that needs to be covered. That's where we're at.
That's correct.
That's okay.
As we were urged to do by the.
2023 State Auditor Report.
State Auditor of California. Did you have some? All right, I'm glad somebody else brought up the idea of collecting debts owed to an organization, given that someone here does that in their main job, day job. A topic I would be very happy to return to at some future meeting. Any other questions or conversations? This is an action item. I'd be happy to hear a motion.
I just, one more time, you said it's about 600 people per year?
Six fifty.
So we're talking about 50,000 to 655,000? Okay.
We have a resolution. Thank you, Sharon.
Well, I'll move it as it's a starting point.
Motion by Trustee Stevens. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Giorgiello. Roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
No.
Harrison, not present. Huser?
Aye.
Giorgiello?
Aye.
Solow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
With 11 ayes and 1 nay, the motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Moad. At this time, I think we see that we have some, do we want to confirm that we have lunch out there, those lunches there? Why don't we take a short 15-minute break? We're actually running behind schedule, so if we could be back here in 15 minutes and have a working lunch, I think that would give us a shot at getting through our agenda before the end of the day. With that, at 12:15, being 12:15 now, we'll be back at 12:30. Thanks, everyone.
We are now live and recording.
Thank you. Secretary Lim, we will now continue with today's agenda. Next is item 6.9, Proposed New Rule 5.32 and Amendments to Rules 5.15, 5.151, 5.391, 5.441, 5.461, 3.125, and 4.47 of the Rules of State Bar Regarding Waivers of State Bar Court Filing Fees and Transcript Costs: Return from Public Comment and Request for Adoption. And this will be presented by Clerk of the Court Kathy Scher. Kathy?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have the next two items, and they are both rules, rules proposals that are back from public comment. This first item has to do with the ability of litigants in State Bar Court cases to pursue their cases regardless of their ability to pay fees and transcript costs. So late last year, the Supreme Court asked the State Bar to look at possible changes to address the issue of litigants who were unable to seek review in their cases because of the requirement to pay the costs of transcript preparation. This led to a broader examination of how financial considerations can limit access to justice in State Bar Court cases and to this proposal, which allows two kinds of waiver. One is the payment of transcript preparation costs, which are currently required in order for someone to pursue a review of their case in the Review Department of the State Bar Court, and also waiver of filing fees in those few case types where filing fees apply in State Bar Court case, in the State Bar Court, largely petitions for reinstatement and appeals of moral character determinations. With regard to transcript costs, the existing rule that specifically requires payment of these costs is in the court's Rules of Practice rather than the Rules of Procedures. The amendments that will create the procedure for those waivers will be adopted by the State Bar Court Executive Committee. The court is currently working on finalizing rule language for the executive committee's consideration. The proposed rule changes authorizing filing fee waivers are straightforward. In cases where filing fee is required, the litigant will be eligible for a waiver of that fee if they would meet the criteria for scaling of their licensing fee set at set in State Bar Rule 2.15, requiring an income below $60,478.35. The applicant will fill out a simple form that will be posted on the State Bar Court's website, and in most cases, the court will make a decision based solely on the application without the need for any further documentation or for a hearing. There were only four public comments received, and which were unanimously in favor of the proposal. Only one made a substantive comment and noting that it would help ensure equal access to justice in State Bar Court proceedings. I did want to talk briefly about the potential financial and workload impacts on the court and on the State Bar. The court does not see a lot of cases that require filing fees, but it is possible that by making waivers available, we will see more applications for review of moral character determinations and more petitions for reinstatement. Similarly, the availability of waivers for transcript preparation costs may result in more litigants seeking review. For both types of waiver, the result will not only be the loss of revenue, or in the case of transcript costs, an increased expenditure because those are paid to the agency that prepares the transcript, but also an increase in workload for staff at the State Bar and at the State Bar Court as they will have to handle the increased number of cases. That said, regardless of these potential impacts, allowing fee waivers is important as a matter of basic fairness. The State Bar and the State Bar Court should not make someone's ability to pursue their moral character appeal, their petition for reinstatement, or review of their case shouldn't be contingent on their financial ability to pay. I am happy to answer. Any questions you may have?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Trustee Buena Ventura.
Can you tell us how much the transcript costs are? And does the State Bar use the certified court reporters, or is it by recording?
It's by recording. We use a service called For the Record, which is basically a recording system that we have installed in all of our courtrooms. And then, I believe, the service that does the transcribing is BRICS, and they transcribe from those recordings of the court proceedings, so we don't have court reporters. That said, transcript costs can vary enormously. You know, there will be some cases where it can be tens of thousands of dollars if they're, if the trial lasted several days, for example, but, you know, it would be under $10,000 if it was a one-day trial.
Any other questions or comments? This is an action item. We would be happy for a motion.
What's the budget impact? Here it is. What's the budget impact to the bar on this?
Kathy, the question is, what's the budget?
What's the budget impact to the bar on this?
Yeah, so let me, so I think that, so this is, again, calculated using the numbers of cases that we have currently, and that the loss of revenue for the waiver of filing fees would be less than $10,000 per year. Again, I think the part that is hard to calculate is if we start getting many more cases, not only do we not get the filing fees in those cases, assuming that they got waivers, but then there's also increased workload for processing those cases. Transcript preparation costs, it's hard to say. I think, you know, again, it's based on the number of cases that we get seeking review currently and based on, you know, a rough estimate of how many of those might be eligible for waivers. We calculated $20,000 to $50,000, but there may be litigants who do not seek waiver because they know they cannot pay the transcript preparation costs, and so that would be an increased cost. And again, also the added workload of. And again, also the added workload of more cases going to review them currently.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, or do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. I'm sorry, motion by Trustee Good, who made the second? Second by Trustee Stevens. Roll call vote, please.
Barahona? Not present?
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison, not present. Huser? Not present. Giorgiello?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
With 11 ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. On to our next item, and Kathy, thank you for staying with us for this as well. 6.10, Proposed Amendments to the Rules of Procedure and of the State Bar Regarding the Alternative Discipline Program, State Bar Rules 5.381, 5.382, 5.384, 5.386, and 5.389.1: Return from Public Comment and Request for Adoption. Kathy?
Yeah, thank you. So these changes, which came to the board and were sent out for public comment back in May, expand eligibility for participation in the Alternative Discipline Program, or ADP, which is a program that offers an alternative for attorneys whose misconduct is linked to substance use or mental health issues. I will give a very brief refresher on how the program works, in case you don't remember all the details from back in May, and then go over what will change. And then, Sharon, we actually have a little bit of early data on the ADP program, which is going to newly be added to the court's performance metrics when I present those to you later today, so you get a little preview in this presentation. So let me start by giving a very brief overview of how the ADP works. In an appropriate case, OCTC, the attorney or the court itself, can refer an attorney for evaluation as to whether the attorney should be accepted into the ADP. Acceptance into the program is contingent upon the attorney meeting certain conditions. The court must approve a stipulation of facts and conclusion of law that is agreed to by both parties, the attorney and OCTC. The attorney has to be accepted into the Lawyers Assistance Program, which oversees the attorney's treatment. And then critically, the attorney also has to be bound to meet strict eligibility requirements. These include a bar on participation for anyone who is subject to summary disbarment for conviction of certain types of crimes, and under the existing rule of bar on participation where the state bar court judge finds that the misconduct involved, that the misconduct that is charged involved acts of moral turpitude, dishonesty, or corruption. So then, when the attorney is accepted into the program, they are set... Thank you. Forgot to ask for the next slide. When they are accepted into the program, the court, at the outset, issues two different alternative discipline recommendations called the high-low, and the low level is what will be recommended for discipline if the attorney successfully completes all the requirements of the program. And then, the high level is what will be recommended if the attorney fails to complete the program and is terminated from the program. So, you know, I think it's important, the court holds regular status conferences, hears reports on how the attorney is proceeding with treatment and fulfilling of any other conditions that may have been imposed. And I do want to stress that although it's an alternative to standard disciplinary proceedings, that these attorneys do face discipline. Like typically, there are things like suspensions imposed or a requirement for someone to take an ethics course again, but that kind of thing is very typical in... The next slide, please. Thank you. So the most significant change that this proposal makes is that attorneys whose misconduct involved moral turpitude will no longer be barred from participation solely on that basis. This will not only open up participation for more attorneys, but will also lessen delays in reaching stipulation in some cases where, in the past, disputes over whether the conduct did involve moral turpitude made it difficult for the parties to reach agreement. I do want to address the one comment that we received on this proposal, was to oppose the proposal by making it clear what the proposal doesn't do. The comment opposed expansion of eligibility to those who have committed serious crimes and gave examples, things like murder and rape. Let me be very clear, nothing in this proposal would make attorneys convicted of those crimes eligible for participation in the ADP. Under Business and Professions Code 6102(c), an attorney who is convicted of a felony where an element of the crime involves moral turpitude, or convicted of a felony where the facts and circumstances of the crime involve moral turpitude, is subject to summary disbarment, and anyone who is subject to summary disbarment under those provisions is ineligible to participate in the ADP and will remain ineligible. The expansion reaches those who are charged with professional misconduct involving moral turpitude, or who have been convicted of lesser crimes that may involve moral turpitude. In making those attorneys eligible for participation, it does also set minimum sanctions that will be recommended in those cases. And then, there are other changes that are made in this proposal, largely at the request of the judges of the state bar court. It gives them greater flexibility as to when they can refer an attorney to the program, allowing them to do it later on in the process, and it clarifies some points as to what procedures are for evaluation and for moving through the program. The next slide, please. Okay, so as I said, we have newly begun tracking and analyzing some data relating to the program that are newly going to be included in the dashboard of performance metrics for the state bar court. I do want to give the caveat that, at this point, we have very few years of data, and because this is a small program without a lot of participants, there really is not enough data at this point to draw any conclusions. It just maybe gives a kind of foreshadowing of what we may find as we collect more data over the years. And so based on that, the initial data does seem to show that recidivism rates for attorneys who complete the ADP program are similar to the recidivism rates for the full pool of all attorneys who are disciplined. And so you can see on the left, it shows the one-year recidivism rate. The higher lines are the lines that show all investigations for those attorneys, and I believe the red line for that is the ADP completers, and the blue-green line is those in regular discipline. And you can see that, you know, broadly speaking, over those four years, the one-year recidivism rate counting investigations was roughly similar, or perhaps a little lower, for the ADP completers. And then, the lower two lines are the recidivism rate based on those who actually were disciplined. That was zero for the first, within one year of completion of the program for the first three years, and then jumps up to 20% in looking at the people who finished in 2023. I realize it's a little hard to read this slide, at least it is for me. I do want to say, I think that's a good illustration of why you need to be a little careful with these numbers. You know, when we're talking about 20%, I think, I looked at the numbers, it was like 15 people who completed in that year, so you're talking about three attorneys, and that gives you this, you know, jump in the late of the citizen. And then similarly, on the right, it shows the three-year recidivism rate. We only had two years for which we could calculate that, since we're starting in 2020, and it was for actual discipline opposed to investigations, it was... And then, next slide, please. So I want to end by offering some anecdotal evidence in the face of having very preliminary evidence in terms of data. The experience of the judges of the state bar court, the ADP is absolutely the right option for some attorneys, and it has helped a lot of attorneys get back on track from substance use problems or from mental health issues. You know, this is a proposal that, in a fairly modest way, will allow more attorneys to benefit from the program who are really appropriate for the program, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you again, Kathy. Great presentation. Any questions? Trustee Buena Ventura.
So for the lawyers who are accepted into the ADP program, if it's based on, let's say, mental health issues, is that, the mental health diagnosis, for example, is that, does that remain confidential? And then also, about the treatment, if it's a mental health issue, is the treatment or whatever program that they're going to be asked to participate in, is that also confidential or not?
Yeah, so the court's records of the proceedings in ADP, in ADP cases are confidential. I know less about the treatment end of it. I know that they have to work through the LAP to arrange treatment, and I would think, you know, given that the court's end of it is confidential, that that part is confidential as well. But again, that's the piece of it that I don't deal with.
Trustee Buena Ventura, the lawyer assistance program is statutorily confidential.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Trustee Giorgiello.
So, just to be clear, what's before the board is that a person convicted of a crime of a moral turpitude nature would no longer be barred from the ADP? Is that what's before us?
Well, a person who is charged with misconduct that involves moral turpitude...
So it's just a charge? So they're before the state bar court with a charge of some act of moral turpitude?
A disciplinary charge. So that, so it happens when they've been convicted of crimes, although, again, if it's a felony involving moral turpitude, this is not going to apply. It could be a misdemeanor, but it's also just cases where it hasn't been a conviction, it's not a criminal case, it is professional misconduct that involves moral turpitude.
Can you explain something? I have a question I've had since law school. What is an allegation of moral turpitude that's short of a crime?
Thank you.
So, moral turpitude, this time I came prepared for that question because it came up when these rules were first sent out for public comment. So to go back to a very old case law definition, it is defined as an act of baseness, vileness, or depravity in the private and social duties which a man owes to his fellow men or to society in general, contrary to the accepted and customary rule of right and duty between man and man. So broadly, anything that's contrary to honesty and good morals is considered to involve moral turpitude. It doesn't have to involve evil intent. It can be something that's gross negligence. We see charges of moral turpitude. One example that was given to me was someone could be in an unauthorized practice of law case where they were on administrative suspension, grossly negligently held themselves out to be licensed to practice law during that period, thus deceived their potential clients, people who... That could be considered moral turpitude and charged as moral turpitude.
In short, the argument, thank you for that, the argument for allowing them into ADP is what?
So I think the argument for allowing, so I think that's a good example of a type of case where the court might want to consider whether they should be accepted into ADP. I think there was a very long process of discussion of how allegations of moral turpitude, the interplay of those with the evaluation program for, with evaluation for the ADP program. And what the discussions found was the stipulation has to be reached. There were huge delays in reaching the stipulation where there was a dispute over whether the misconduct involved moral turpitude. So, you know, OCTC might charge as moral turpitude, and in the situation that I just described, the attorney might say, no, I really don't believe that that involved moral turpitude, and I believe I should be eligible for this program. You know, it turned into both delay, and then, in the end, that person not ever being able to participate if OCTC continued to say that this was misconduct involving moral turpitude. This will open it up so that where it might be subject to dispute, but OCTC firmly, you know, believes and has charged as moral turpitude, some kind of misconduct, the court can look at it and say, do we believe, you know, like just accepting that this is moral turpitude, do we nonetheless believe that this person, based on their misconduct and what it was linked to in terms of substance use or mental health treatment, is someone who would benefit from the program, and where that, the program, is the right choice in terms of both the attorney being able to get back on track and public protection.
All right. Trustee Huser.
I apologize, I got delayed coming back from lunch, so if this was already asked, I apologize. But following up on that last question, looking at the last page of your, or one of the last pages of your deck, it says the eligibility expansion will be misconduct involving moral turpitude that results in significant harm. So seems as though there's already been some sort of finding, not only that there's moral turpitude, but that there has been significant harm presumably to a member of the public or, you know, something. So can you explain that?
Well, so the current language of the rule bars participation where there's a finding that the attorney's misconduct involves acts of moral turpitude, dishonesty, or corruption that has resulted in significant harm to one or more clients or to the administration of justice. So what this particular change does is it takes out the language that says moral turpitude. So yes, so we're talking about where there's moral turpitude that has resulted in significant harm to a client, one or more clients, or the public, or the administration of justice. That person now becomes potentially eligible while those whose misconduct involved dishonesty or corruption that have resulted in significant harm remain ineligible. Again, I think that the determination through the discussions that started with the ad hoc commission on the discipline system and moved through a number of different bodies was that, so it's singling out this particular type of misconduct, you know, where there might be other kinds of misconduct that were not considered to involve moral turpitude, but did cause significant harm, that person could be eligible, and that moral turpitude, because it's a difficult determination to make, because again, the evaluation and the stipulation process got very hung up on determining whether there was moral turpitude involved, because that was one of the things that it would both expand eligibility in a way that was appropriate to a group of people that, you know, could benefit from this program and who, where, again, you know, the program is the right way to provide public protection with regards to this person's misconduct, and also that it would help to avoid some of the delays in the process, even for those people who, you know, perhaps could, might be, at the end of that process, be found eligible because the finding would be made that their misconduct did not involve turpitude, because it kind of takes that question out of the equation.
I'd just like to remind everyone, there's still going to be that low and the high, right? So we're talking about people who have been determined, if they get that lower level of discipline, to have been rehabilitated in some way, shape, or form. If they do not successfully complete the ADP program, which can take many years, in some instances frankly longer than they would have served a suspension, an actual suspension or a stayed suspension, if they have successfully completed that program, then there is still... then there is still additionally that low level of discipline as well.
Yeah, I think I would add that when I was first learning about the ADP program, I, in some ways, I was surprised that people do opt to go into the program because in some ways it can be, it can require more of you than would be required under standard disciplinary.
You have more, trustee Huser?
Yeah, I just, I mean, from my point of view, misconduct by involving moral turpitude which results in substantial harm is a, you know, those are bad actors. And so just I personally would have a lot of trouble, you know, not having them subject to the standard disciplinary procedures. That's just my personal thoughts on that. But that is not a low standard. That is a high standard of wrongdoing. So in protection of the public, I would have a hard time with that.
Any other trustees?
May I?
Yes, vice chair, Tony.
So I have a few kind of basic questions. So the stipulation of facts and conclusion of law, I think it means something like they've agreed and signed off that they committed a transgression, illegal transgression. Is that what that means or does that mean something else?
Correct. Typically, they will stipulate to, stipulate that they are culpable for the charges that OCTC has brought against.
Okay, good, good. That's, I'm glad I'm close. And so when someone is in the ADP program, is that reported or that's not reported? Is there on their record or not on their record? I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, and I, so I believe when someone, when the charges are made, so I think it does, I think the short answer is yes. It will be on their record. I don't know in what form it goes on their record, like whether it reflects that they were in ADP, but they are someone who has been charged with misconduct at that point, and so that is part of it.
So back to this moral turpitude question. The other time I hear us talk about moral is the term moral character. And that before, my understanding is that when someone passes the bar exam, that's not the only requisite for them to become licensed, but that they have to submit and pass a moral character check. And it seems to me that if you have, if they find that you've committed moral turpitude in your past, maybe you won't get the, maybe you would fail the moral character, and maybe you wouldn't be admitted to become an attorney in the first place. Can someone just explain how that works and help me how close I am and where am I mistaken conceptually?
And Kathy, I just want to make you aware that we've invited George Cardona also to join the conversation if he might be helpful in answering some of these questions. So please, both of you feel free.
Yeah, thank you. I think I can answer that. I think there are two very different steps, right? Like when you are applying to be admitted to practice law, yeah, part of that process is you have to present evidence of moral character, and there's a determination made at that point. So we're talking about, you know, you've now been admitted to practice law, but you are charged with some kind of misconduct that warrants discipline against you. And that may be misconduct that involves moral turpitude. So yeah, I mean, you know, ideally, in an ideal world, once you vetted everybody and they were found to be of good moral character, that would turn out to be true for the rest of their lives. But unfortunately, as we know, that's not how human beings work, and it's not how attorneys work. So sometimes attorneys do engage in misconduct, and then misconduct may involve moral turpitude. And that's the point where they enter the discipline system, charges are filed against them, and they may or may not be able to participate in this program.
If I can just follow up, I do appreciate the conversation, the explanation, the proposal. And I understand that it's, you know, kind of, you know, applying restorative justice standards to attorneys accused of wrongdoing, okay? And I am in general supporter of restorative justice as a concept and principle. I do, however, feel very much like trustee Huser that from my understanding of moral turpitude, which appears to have dishonesty as a key part of it, deception as a key part of it, that I really feel that that should disqualify, that that's reasonable to disqualify someone to go into an alternative discipline program. And so I would find it very hard to support this proposal.
I do just wanted to say that dishonesty itself is, where the misconduct involves dishonesty or corruption that results in significant harm, those remain grounds for ineligibility. The moral turpitude is the only grounds for ineligibility that will be taken out of the rule. And they are things that, yeah, they are sometimes bound together, and sometimes the misconduct may involve both dishonesty and moral turpitude. But it's in those cases where the misconduct is not bound to be dishonest, which would still make the person ineligible, but is bound to have involved moral turpitude, that they would now be considered.
I want to give you another chance, Kathy.
Okay.
Give me two or three examples of moral turpitude that don't involve dishonesty that a judge, one of our state bar court judges, and I understand this proposal is something that they support, okay? What would be a couple of examples?
I think one example might be someone who is involved in a misdemeanor DUI case. And that might be charged by, or OCTC might assert that that crime involved moral turpitude. Where it wasn't a DUI that, you know, where moral turpitude was an element of the crime, but where the level of negligence was involved, that it's just considered not to meet that moral standard. I'm trying to remember the, you know, where you really are not meeting the duties that you owe to your fellow human beings, right? Because you've acted so negligently and caused harm in doing so. That could be considered moral turpitude. It doesn't involve dishonesty or corruption. Trying to think of another type of example where, I mean, I think that kind of grossly negligent behavior that causes harm is the kind of thing that would get charged as moral turpitude.
Thank you for indulging me.
Sorry?
Thank you for indulging me.
Oh, of course. No, I'm happy to try and, it gets kind of, it's a complicated set of eligibility standards, let me put it that way.
Thank you, Kathy. George, do you have any insights you could share with us as well?
I, I'm sorry, it's really loud. I just wanted to make a couple of points, which is, one, the removal of moral character is only from the absolute eligibility criteria. The court, the state bar court, still retains discretion in making its ultimate determinations as to whether people should go into the program. And that consideration comes after OCTC and the respondent have arrived at a stipulation at which they have agreed that for the particular conduct and issue, there are two levels of discipline. One, if they successfully complete ADP, the other if they don't. And there's been a showing that in fact their misconduct has been motivated by and partially caused by in some way either substance abuse or mental health. So the removal of moral character is just from the eligibility criteria. And the removal of that was motivated precisely by the discussion we're having here. The problem being that the definition of moral turpitude under the case law and under the statutes is, A, very old, and B, not incredibly precise, so that there is a wide panamera of stuff that might or might not be moral turpitude. And so the concept was to remove that as a eligibility criteria so that there weren't lengthy debates between OCTC and the other side as to whether something did or didn't constitute moral turpitude. And then discussion, arrival at a stipulation, and ultimately the state bar court judge serving as the gatekeeper to assess whether the stipulation coupled with the evidence of whether there's a cause that can be addressed by treatment, coupled with whether the agreed-upon level of discipline is serious enough to warrant going into ADP despite that serious misconduct. All of that could be taken into account by the state bar court judge in exercising their discretion, rather than having it be a threshold bar to participation in what is a restorative justice program. So I think it's important that when you look at the amendment, it's not just the removal of moral character from the eligibility criteria, it's the rule as a whole that sets up a framework to do this.
And George, thank you for that explanation. I think that's helpful. Could you also reflect a little bit on what I think some of the examples we've just heard from trustees? Trustee Huser had an example as well as vice chair Tony.
So yeah, I mean, you know, there are a number of examples. I mean, in many instances, moral turpitude can involve dishonesty. And then if it is dishonesty, and dishonesty that has caused significant harm, it would still be ineligible. That's easier to see. If someone's made intentional misrepresentations that have caused harm, that would still be ineligible. You know, the examples you've got, we typically don't pursue first-time DUIs, but we do pursue in some instances second-time DUIs. And depending on the circumstances in which the DUI has occurred, it might constitute moral turpitude even though it didn't involve dishonesty or corruption. It's simply an act that demonstrates a breach of trust that constitutes moral turpitude. Another example would be misappropriation is typically something that constitutes moral turpitude. But misappropriation in the context of discipline doesn't mean what everybody thinks misappropriation means, which would be an intentional theft of funds. It can occur through mismanagement of a client trust account and not involve dishonesty or corruption, but simply gross negligent in managing your client trust account can result in a misappropriation that, under the case law, is defined as moral turpitude. So that's another example that wouldn't fit in the dishonesty category, but could fit in the moral turpitude category. And again, that would now be eligible, although there would have to be an assessment again by the court as gatekeeper as to whether the particular offense and the harm caused warranted going into ADP as opposed to something else.
I'm sorry, so am I correct in maybe hearing both you and Kathy saying that these changes are intended to lessen confusion about the process of deciding when ADP is appropriate and not, I think as some folks here are imagining or wondering, it's not in any way lessening or expanding the opportunity for an alternative pathway for individuals who've committed serious wrongdoings?
I mean, there could still be some serious wrongdoing that goes in, but it would be a situation where the court has looked at it, OCTC has looked at it, determined that that wrongdoing, even though it's serious, with an appropriate stipulation as to a high end and low end. In other words, we have done, for example, stipulations in ADP where even the low end is a fairly lengthy suspension, and the upper end is disbarment. So it's an overall judgment that if they complete, for example, their drug treatment, they should get the two-year suspension rather than disbarment, even though it's serious underlying misconduct. So that will remain the case. That's the case even now. It's just if that serious misconduct happens to be something that could be labeled as moral turpitude, it would be ineligible as a matter of law. Now, the court will be able to look at the misconduct as a whole, assess its seriousness, assess what the agreement is as to the discipline, and then make a decision as to whether it should go into ADP or not. And it will be back and forth.
And again, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be repetitive, but so I think what I just heard you say was, it clears the field of confusing stipulations or wording in law, but it does not change the measure, the bar, the thresholds for serious versus less serious matters being considered for an alternative pathway or not.
So the first part, yes. It avoids confusion in terms of how misconduct is labeled. The second part, no. Potentially, this could expand and allow some more serious misconduct to go into the ADP program because it was otherwise excluded simply because it was labeled as moral turpitude.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I think trustee Giorgiello and then trustee Buena Ventura.
Yeah, I guess I would just say I'm not following the rationale, and I second what trustee Hauser and vice chair Tony had said. I just think it's very, I'm having a lot of trouble getting to, you've engaged in a very bad act sufficient to be charged by the office of chief trial counsel. Moral turpitude is a pretty high bar. And notwithstanding that you're, we're allowing them to be subject to an alternative discipline system, it just, I'm not.
I think what, perhaps the name of the program is misleading because it doesn't, it doesn't mean they won't get disciplined. They'll still get disciplined, but it'll be discipline that is at a somewhat lower level because they have successfully completed the drug treatment or the mental health treatment.
Trustee Buena Ventura.
I support this motion. As lawyers, trial lawyers, we get into arguments all the time about what constitutes moral turpitude. And I think by removing the label, we are enabling ourselves to just focus on the act rather than figuring out if it belongs under the category of moral turpitude, but sort of just zeroing in on the misconduct, on the act. So if we can just focus on that, which I think OCTC does and the courts, then you can, and because they have the discretion, then we can let them decide whether or not this is the kind of case that should continue with this resolution. So I think it's a good idea to remove the label, but with an understanding that we're still focusing on the conduct, and that doesn't change. And so that's what should drive us, not whether or not something is labeled as moral turpitude.
Trustee Good.
Yeah, I concur with trustee Buena Ventura. And, you know, as I look at this, it's essentially, you know, we're trusting in the discretion of state bar court, the state bar judges, and through a rigorous process to become state bar judges, and also in George and his team at OCTC's evaluation of complex, you know, facts that are very difficult to summarize and come up with hypotheticals. And so I entirely support this because I trust that OCTC is there advocating for their own position. The state bar judges are making a determination. And I think expanding their discretion to consider this under certain circumstances is appropriate. So I support this as is, and thank you, George.
Yes, trustee Good, trustee Gore.
I too support it, the concept that it's a framework.
I too support it, the concept that it's a framework now and not a rigorous, like, definition, and having a framework to allow those who are closest to the information. And I recall the testimonies that we had around the ADP, that you could be in it 18 months and miss a day and be back at square one. I mean, it is a rigorous program to go through, and so for those reasons, I would support it.
Yes, trustee Grande.
I'm also in support, and I think that, you know, this has come to us because there's been a need that's been identified, that in particular with just the disparities of attorney discipline, and I think having a framework versus it being so black and white is important. So I just, this isn't, this is something that has taken a bit to get to this point, and again, I support it.
I want to thank everybody for this lengthy discussion. I think it's been very clarifying, George. And Kathy, thank you for your help in understanding this. I would be very excited to hear a motion.
I'll make it.
Motion by trustee Good, second by trustee Buena Ventura. Roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison not present. Huser?
Aye.
Giorgiello?
Abstain.
Soell? Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Nay.
Nay.
Trejo?
Nay.
Cisneros?
Aye.
With eight ayes and three nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. We'll now move on to item 6.11, approval of interest on lawyer's trust accounts grants distribution for 2026. And we are hearing from program director Doan Nguyen.
My name is Doan Nguyen, and I'm a program director in the Office of Access and Inclusion, and our office, as you know, staffs the Legal Services Trust One Commission. Again, I'm here today to present on agenda item 6.11, which asks the Board of Trustees to approve an interest on lawyer trust account IOLTA 2026 grant distribution in the amount of $217,548, and also to maintain a reserve of $25 million. This distribution amount represents a 14% decrease over the 2025 IOLTA distribution amount of $252 million. So your meeting materials includes a lengthy memo that has detailed projections on the various revenue streams that go into comprising the IOLTA grants. We've also included several attachments that summarize historical information on the various grant programs that are managed by the Office of Access and Inclusion. I do want to quickly note for you that yesterday, the Federal Reserve did meet, and they had, they dropped interest rates by 25 basis points, and we're now down to 4 and 1/4%, which is still a fairly strong interest rate and pulling in strong revenue for the state bar. That, the recommended IOLTA distribution that's before you today does build in two rate drops for this year, so we have already factored in that rate drop that happened yesterday, and we are still on track to make all of our projections through the end of the year. I also want to take this opportunity to share with you a few trends in our grantmaking. First, we have seen a meaningful uptick in new applications since the pandemic. So prior to 2020, we've hovered around 99 to about 101 legal aid organizations that the state bar funds, and since then, in the last few years, we've had between five and six new applications every year. For the 2026 grant year, we are set to fund six additional legal aid organizations, bringing our total to 119 organizations, and this is the most grantees that we've ever funded. Of these six new applicants, four of them are immigration providers, and also four of the six serve rural areas. I also wanted to highlight, and I think as you are all aware, the state bar is the largest funder of civil legal services in California, overtaking Legal Services Corporation back a few years ago, and LSC are the federal funders of 11 of our organizations that we fund as well. For this current 2025 grant year, the state bar distributed over $315 million in grants across nine different grant programs, and for the 2026 year, even though some of our state and federal streams of funding will be ending, we are still set to distribute at least $259 million across six different grant programs. So that concludes my short presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about IOLTA distribution or our grant program.
And thanks for a wonderful presentation, and it's very exciting to see all the legal organizations that will be funded by these millions of dollars. I'll be happy to have any questions or comments from trustees or a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Good, second by trustee Stevens. Roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison not present. Huser?
Aye.
Giorgiello?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
I need to recuse myself, so I'll abstain. Thank you.
Cisneros?
Aye.
With 11 ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. On to our next item, 6.12, Client Trust Account Protection Program update. We are benefited by the presence again of Stephen Moad, and this time joined by Jennifer Stalvey. Thank you very much, folks. Take it away.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your time today. We're looking forward to giving you an update on the Client Trust Account Protection Program. Specifically, we want to talk about the compliance review requirement of CTAP. So this is distinct from the attorney's annual reporting requirements that they do during the annual renewal cycle. A compliance review is a evaluation of an attorney or law firm's trust accounting practices, and it's assessing compliance with the rules of professional conduct, largely Rule 1.15 and other, other authorities. And so let me go on to the next slide. Great. So over the past year, probably longer, we have been researching, designing, refining, and implementing this program. Probably with a number of elements you can see on the slide, but I want to highlight probably the one of the most important ones, which was a pilot program. So we put a public call out for our licensees to volunteer to go through the process. To our surprise, over 300 firms applied, which was great, and we selected 21 firms across a variety of practice sectors and firm sizes to go through the process, and 18 completed. And this was really important because we were, wanted to test our process that we put in place, and also look at our procedures, determine scope, so that we could have an effective and efficient program. So this is a quick snapshot of the results of the 18 volunteers. The first set of areas of noncompliance are about record keeping. So over 80% of the firms were either partially or fully deficient in their compliance with the record, record keeping requirements of Rule 1.15. Most importantly, the reconciliations. We also looked at a number of other areas. We performed some recalculations, and where we found that a calculation error was made, and it was not in the client's favor, we actually, the attorneys made those clients whole as a result of going through this process. And I'll let you, you can look, read through the other areas on your own. We also sent a survey afterward. We were discussing along the way with them, but at the end, we provided an anonymous survey to give us their feedback. Again, I'll let you look through these on your own, but by and large, the volunteers had a very positive experience. 100% said they were glad that they signed up, which was great. And just as a quick observation, one of the things that became clear was that there were some really easy remedies for a lot of the noncompliance, which was great, and they, they wanted this information, which is why they signed up. So as one example, attorneys have a duty to notify clients within 14 days of receiving funds. There just weren't processes in place for a lot of firms, so this would fall through the cracks. They would notify some clients, but not others. One of the great meetings we had at a wrap-up was with the designated attorney and the CFO, and the CFO had no idea the attorneys had this requirement. And she said, I make the deposits, I'll just make a process to notify the clients when I'm receive the deposited, receive the checks, and I'll copy the, you know, related attorney. So, you know, now they have a process in place, and the turn, and the clients will be notified timely. So I'll let Steve talk about some other takeaways.
Thank you. So protection of the public has always been at the center of this program, and we have also felt that we could streamline potentially some of the record keeping requirements. Maybe they don't all apply in all practice situations or all practice sectors. Sometimes, for example, non-IOTAs, the rules there may be a little bit more cumbersome because there's no reason to keep a client ledger and an account journal because they are essentially the same for an account with only one client. But the rules don't treat them differently right now. So those may be things that we come back to you in the next year or two and say, here's some ways that we can streamline record keeping. But for now, it's very important, what Jennifer noted, that there is a high level of not maintaining the required records. So just moving on, the, very quickly, while we were not required to do so, we did send out the proposed scope of these compliance reviews for public comment. Understandably, nearly 75% of the comments were about the cost of the program, right? And that they, that the cost that will be imposed on licensees. 61% relatedly were about the impact on solo and small firms. 13% were about confidentiality, and really only 13%, 28 comments, were about the scope of the compliance reviews, which is what we had sent out for public comment in the first place. So let's talk about those very briefly. First, the issues raised about cost and confidentiality are absolutely valid concerns, but we had already addressed those. We got a statutory change that addresses confidentiality. We have developed an exemption for hiring an outside CPA firm to conduct the compliance review if the solo practitioner or law firm has gross revenue of less than $150,000 in the, in the year. So we think for a large portion of that, that has been addressed and is no longer an issue. And of course, that wasn't included in the public comment opportunity because that's not what the public comment opportunity was about. So those things were there. I do want to say that I truly appreciate the thought that went into the letters from the California Employment Lawyers Association and the Los Angeles County Bar Association. They raised some very good points, also ones that we had already considered, and I believe that we dealt with. In the interest of time, I don't want to go into them now, but I'm happy to address them if anyone's interested. Essentially, in conclusion, the rules of court authorize the state bar to require licensees to participate in these compliance reviews. You previously adopted rules which authorize and require these compliance reviews, and we piloted the program, as Jennifer detailed. We got some really spectacular results, both in some ways shocking and in other ways very positive, in that despite all of the not maintaining required record keeping, 100% of the people said they thought this was a valuable experience, and that really is the education purpose of this program. So I was very thrilled with that. So with that, and the fact that many of the public comments have already been addressed by the design of the program, we are excited to report back to you sometime next year after the first round of mandatory compliance reviews, and we don't have any action items. This was an information only.
Thank you very much. Very exciting news and results that you've been able to share with us today. Look forward to the next iteration. I'll open it up for any questions or comments from trustees. Yes, Vice Chair Tony.
I really want to recognize Chair Cisneros' leadership in conceptualizing this program, setting it up, using his years of experience as the treasurer of the city and county of San Francisco, and of, you know, really helping, I mean, this client trust protection program really is a huge game changer when it comes to protecting the public. And it's, you know, it's still, you know, rolling out, it's still being refined, but I like seeing things like the, in your report about the sample, sample audits, you can't audit everybody, that's just how it is, but, you know, the fact that, you know, custodians of these accounts are aware that they may be randomly selected, okay? That that is a great way to approach this, and I, I think this really is a structural solution. And I also appreciate the approach of providing support to attorneys, of figuring out what are the challenges that they're having, this, you know, program itself. So it's also taking into account what are the needs of attorneys, of large firms, of small practitioners. So I just wanted to express my appreciation.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair Tony. I also am excited about the progress, but I must say, your implementation is, sounds really tremendous, and I don't know how you are, but I'm actually very, very surprised, pleasantly so, that even after being reviewed, we sometimes use the word audited, you don't need to do that, you're, 100% of your engagements came away with positive outcomes and positive feelings from the experience. I think that speaks to a huge untapped resource of just interest in learning, interest in understanding, interest in helpful implementation guidance, and very, very widespread positive outcomes. So thank you for this great insight to your initial step.
Thank you.
Any other comments from trustees? All right. Thank you very much. I believe, Mr. Moad, you get to stay with us.
I do. My pleasure.
Item 6.13, proposed new rule 1.3 and proposed amendments to Rule 2.33 of the rules of the state bar relating to acceptable methods of payment request to circulate for public comment. Take it away, Mr. Moad.
Thank you. This is really a solution to a problem that has bothered me since I transferred to the Division of Regulation several years ago and, and learned that this was a problem. In general, the Supreme Court orders non-payment suspensions to be effective July 1, as I alluded to in a prior agenda item earlier. Therefore, we make other administrative suspensions also effective July 1. The problem is, because we accept mailed checks that can be postmarked anytime up to June 30th, we have to wait a week or more in order to receive and then process those checks to see who paid timely and who did not, and that may include not just annual fees, but noncompliance fees for other requirements, et cetera. And as a result, it is only after that processing time that we can actually suspend noncompliant licensees. That means that if a noncompliant licensee or a judge were to look up that licensee and look at their license status between July 1 and the date that we actually suspend them, for example, then they would see that their license is in fact valid. But then if they look up their license after that date, they would see not only that it was not valid, that they were inactively enrolled at that time, but that they were inactively enrolled effective July 1, which causes a large number of problems, particularly with our government licensees, public defenders, district attorneys, right? They're in court trying They're in court trying cases, and then after the fact, they may have done closing argument, and then after the fact, they are moved involuntary inactive, predating the beginning of the trial or some phase of the trial in which they participated. So it is a problem both for the licensees, not just government lawyers, but that's an easy example because they're in court so frequently, but also for the courts. And so this, the goal here is to reduce the unauthorized practice of law and the inconvenience to the courts. And of course, there also, as I mentioned in the agenda item, there's a financial benefit to the state bar of making this change as well.
Thank you very much, Steve. Are there any comments? This is an action item, and we will be taking a vote on it.
Move to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
Where is the second? Thank you. Motion by Trustee Stevens, second by Trustee Gore. Roll call vote, please.
Oh, real quick. I don't know if I saw this in another, it was, okay, no paper checks, credit cards, ACH, but not a cash app yet, no Zelle Venmo. Did I see that somewhere else?
There was a mention of Zelle and PayPal and things like that in the CTAP report. That's one of the findings is that lawyers are accepting that, but we're not accepting that at this point, no.
We're not, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Barahona? Not present. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison, not present.
Huser?
Aye.
Giorgiello?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
With 11 ayes and 0 nays, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, item 6.14, proposed amendment to State Bar Rule 3.114 regarding specialty education non-compliance fees for legal specialists. This is a request to circulate for public comment, and we'll be hearing from special counsel, Deputy Special Counsel Mia Ellis. Hello, Mia.
Good afternoon, Chair Cisneros, members of the board. This is a request to the board to circulate for public comment, proposed amendment to State Bar Rule 3.114, allowing a non-compliance fee for legal specialists for late compliance with their education reporting. We do not currently assess a fee for late compliance with legal specialist education compliance. We do expend staff time and resources of sending out late compliance notifications to specialists and in processing those late compliance forms. So with that, we request authorization to pose for public comment, proposed amendment to State Bar Rule 3.114. The attachment B is the redline version of the amended rule. Also, as staff noted in the staff report, the actual fee will be considered by the Finance Committee in November, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions?
To those of us that are specialists, are we not allowed to vote on this?
Our legal counsel, I'm sure, can answer. Well, she's looking into that. Any other questions?
Yes, I could recuse, and I will.
Very good. Then we are in need of a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Stevens, second by Trustee Trejo. Roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Recuse.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison, not present.
Huser?
Aye.
Giorgiello?
Abstain.
Soell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
With 10 ayes and 0 nays, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to item 6.15, update regarding the 2022 to 2027 strategic planning process. Hello, Erica.
Hi. Thank you. I think we'll also have Lila Hyde promoted. And while she's being promoted, I just want to take an opportunity to introduce Lila to everyone. So she is the new lead in our Office of Compliance, for which we've had a vacancy for a bit of time here. So with, I think, just barely a month under her belt, I'd like to introduce Lila, and she's going to kick us off.
Great, thank you so much, Erica. There we go, just getting my notes up. Well, hi, everyone. My name is Lila Hyde. As Erica mentioned, I'm the new lead over the Office of Compliance under the Office of the Executive Director, and I'm really thrilled to be here today and meeting you virtually, and I look forward to working with you. Today, I'm going to give you a progress update on the implementation of the 2022 to 2027 strategic plan. Just so you know, we last shared updates to the board in February 2025, so we are excited to present some updates on our progress and accomplishments since then. Okay, before diving in, I wanted to do a really quick refresher on our strategic plan and the implementation process. As I'm sure you'll recall, the 2022 to 2027 strategic plan sets forth five key goals to help advance our mission of protecting the public. These goals are represented by the blue boxes on the right-hand side of the slide and include strengthening the attorney discipline system, enhancing access to inclusion in the legal system, regulating the legal profession, engaging partners, and innovative use of technology and responsible data, which was adopted partway through the implementation of the strategic plan. To implement the overall strategic plan, staff developed two operational plans. The first is the Strategic Operational Plan. This plan outlines specific activities that help advance each of the strategic plan goals. And the second plan is the Core Operational Plan, which identifies activities that are necessary to improve the state bar's infrastructure to support the strategic plan's success. This slide provides a little bit more information about the distinctions between the two operational plans, and the graphics show the various components of the two operational plans and demonstrate how the plans are organized. I believe you have these slides in your pocket, so I'm going to move ahead for the sake of time so that we can get into the updates. Okay, with some of that background in mind, I am going to now provide some updates on our progress with regard to the two operational plans, and I'm going to start with the Strategic Operational Plan. This slide provides a summary of where we are in completing the different activities in the Strategic Operational Plan. The pie chart on the left summarizes the project status of all projects in the Strategic Operational Plan, and the bar chart on the right shows how those projects are distributed across the five strategic plan goals, and also shows the distribution of project status by goal. Since we last provided an update to the board in February 2025, we have added 44 new projects to the Strategic Operational Plan for a total of 215 projects. These projects were added around the halfway point of the strategic plan's implementation this May. And just so you know, about 30% of those new projects, or about 13 projects, are related to Goal 1, strengthening the attorney discipline system, and roughly another 30% of those new projects are related to Goal 2, enhancing access to and inclusion in the legal system. As you can see in the pie chart, 90% of all strategic operational plan activities have been started or completed, with over half of these activities having been completed. And I would also highlight that 63% of projects included in both the February plan and September plan have been completed, so many of the, these projects that are in progress or not started are new projects. You can also see that a majority of activities are in Goal 1 and Goal 2. Okay, since we don't plan to provide the board with another update on strategic plan implementation progress before the end of the calendar year, we did want to provide some early projections as to where we will be by the end of 2025. As you can see in the pie chart, 170 projects in the Strategic Operational Plan have a due date at or before the end of this year. This represents nearly 80% of all projects in the Strategic Operational Plan. Of these projects, 107 or about 63% have been completed, and 54 projects or about 32% are in progress. Overall, 95% of all projects with the due date before Q4 of 2025 or in progress are completed. A few recent specific accomplishments are highlighted in the staff report, but I'd like to highlight a couple of them now. One, the Division of Regulation automated the certificates of standing process from order to delivery. Two, the Office of Public Trust Liaison launched a consumer education campaign to assist the public in submitting complaints and facilitating connection with other resources when consumer issues do not warrant attorney discipline. And three, the Office of Research and Statistics published an annual report card on workforce diversity and retention trends in the legal profession. And I'd also add that the staff report highlights a few projects that are in progress and that are on track for completion by the end of the calendar year. Okay, we are now going to turn to the Core Operational Plan, and as a reminder, this plan focuses on our resources and our infrastructure. This plan provides a snapshot of our progress in the Core Operational Plan. As we did with the Strategic Operational Plan, we also added projects to the Core Operational Plan since February, in this case, we have added 25 new projects since we last presented to the board, for a total of 82 projects. 83% of all Core Operational Plan activities have been completed or started, with well over half of projects showing a status of complete. And again, 63% of projects that were included in both February and the September versions of the Core Operational Plans have been completed. And as you can see on the bar chart on the right, most projects relate to the operational strategy, investing in our people. Okay, and this final slide outlines our projected progress for the Core Operational Plan through the end of the year. 87% of all Core Operational Plan projects are expected to be complete by the end of 2025, and of the projects that are scheduled for completion by the end of the year, 66% are already complete and 25% are in progress. Just six projects, or roughly 8%, have not yet been started. That concludes my update, and I'll leave some time if folks have any questions.
Any questions? If there are no other questions, this is informational item, and Lila, we thank you for your input.
Thank you so much.
Next, we'll move on to items, items beginning with number seven, where the Board of Trustees sit as the Regulatory Regulation and Discipline Committee, beginning with item 7.1, Proposed Amendments to Rules Governing Mandatory Fee Arbitration Program and Proposed New Fee Mediation Rules, Title III, Division IV, Chapter II of the Rules of the State Bar of California, Request to Circulate for Public Comment, presented by Managing Attorney Dionne McNeff and Attorney Isabel Liu. Hello.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Isabel Liu. I am an attorney with the Mandatory Fee Arbitration Program, which is part of the Office of Professional Support and Client Protection. I will be presenting items 7.1, which are the Proposed Amendments to the Mandatory Fee Arbitration Rules and the Proposed New Fee Mediation Rules. So I will go ahead and share my screen. So before I discuss the substance of the proposed amendments, I'd like to give a little background about the Mandatory Fee Arbitration Program and what it is that we do. So the Mandatory Fee Arbitration Program, or MFA Program for short, was created by statute in 1979 to provide an informal, confidential, and lower-cost alternative to court litigation for resolving attorney-client fee disputes. So the relevant code sections are the Business and Professions Code, section 6200 through 6206, and the program is meant as a consumer protection program. So for those of you who are familiar with arbitration, it's a different statutory program from both the California and the Federal Arbitration Acts. So under the Business and Professions Code, fee arbitration is mandatory for attorneys if it's requested by a client, but generally, it's voluntary for a client if it's initiated by an attorney. And it's generally voluntary because there are exceptions. For example, if there's a court order ordering the parties to go to MFA, or if the parties have a written agreement to submit fee disputes to the Mandatory Fee Arbitration Program. The Business and Professions Code also provides that fee mediation is voluntary for both attorneys and clients. And I want to take a minute here to explain the difference between arbitration and mediation. A lot of people use the terms interchangeably, but they are two separate systems with different goals. So arbitration is a system where there is a third-party neutral who is appointed to decide a dispute. So the outcome of an arbitration is typically an arbitration decision or an award. In contrast, in mediation, it is also a third-party neutral who is appointed to help the parties settle a dispute, and the outcome of mediation is usually a settlement agreement. So they are two separate procedures. So in the state of California, the majority of fee disputes are heard by local bar association programs. So this is typically a county bar association. And some programs offer both fee arbitration as well as fee mediation, but most only offer arbitration. So what the State Bar Mandatory Fee Arbitration Program currently does is it offers arbitration of fee disputes, and it also enforces arbitration awards on behalf of clients. And we do the enforcement aspect free of charge, but we only do it for clients, and that is consistent with our consumer protection goal. The idea is that attorneys have legal training, they have special knowledge, they can enforce their own arbitration awards. In addition to arbitration awards, we also enforce mediated settlement agreements, as well as awards that have been confirmed into court judgments. So why is the state bar interested in offering fee mediation now? So this fee mediation proposal is the first prong in a three-pronged disciplinary diversion program intended to divert fee disputes away from the Office of Chief Trial Counsel, so that that office can focus its resources on attorney misconduct complaints that are more likely to result in discipline. The 2025 adopted budget also includes funding for an online dispute resolution platform to administer both fee arbitration and the proposed fee mediation offering, and the platform has an anticipated launch date of spring of 2026. So the, the purpose behind this item is threefold. The Mandatory Fee Arbitration Program seeks to amend its current fee arbitration rules and rules for enforcement of arbitration awards. Second, we also propose new rules to create a new voluntary fee mediation service. And lastly, we propose to update the schedule of charges and deadlines to reflect both the proposed rule amendments as well as the proposed new rules. So our, next up are the purpose of the, of the rule amendments. So first, we want to increase the clarity and efficiency of the program's existing fee arbitration and enforcement procedures. Second, we want to implement the new fee mediation rules in order to create the fee mediation program. And then we are looking to make sure that the two programs are compatible with each other, so that if necessary, we can refer cases between the two procedures. So for the next three slides, I'm just going to touch on some key proposals from each section of the staff report, so the arbitration rules, the new mediation rules, and the schedule of charges and deadlines. So first up, we have the new, sorry, the amendments to the existing fee arbitration rules, and we are proposing new defined terms and clarifying edits to existing defined terms. And these defined terms will be capitalized throughout the rules to alert people that these are terms of art with special definitions within the context of fee arbitration. We also propose new rule language explaining the procedure for how to request fee mediation. So right now, we're envisioning that the, we have a form to initiate fee arbitration. So we're envisioning that we will add a new question on that form that asks the initiating party, do you agree to voluntary fee mediation? And then for the responding party on their form, there will be a similar question asking them whether they want to go to voluntary fee mediation. And if both parties select yes, then there's an agreement to submit the dispute to fee mediation, and then staff would refer that dispute. mediation, and then staff would refer that dispute off to fee mediation. The last bullet point on this slide is a arbitrator scheduling tool. It's based, we drafted it based on arbitrator feedback. And for background, our fee arbitrators are volunteers. We have both attorney as well as non-attorney arbitrators, and because they're volunteers, we're mindful of their time. And a theme that we saw was that it sometimes is difficult to schedule a hearing date. And so we drafted this rule to give them a tool to expeditiously schedule a arbitration hearing date. So if approved, this rule would permit arbitrators to schedule a hearing date at their discretion if the parties are unable to agree on a hearing date within fifteen days after the notice of appointment of arbitrator is served. And that would also assist the program in living up to its purpose of being a forum for expeditiously resolving attorney-client fee disputes. So next, I have a couple of points on the proposed new rules for fee mediation. So the state bar model rules for voluntary fee mediation and the American Bar Association's model rules for mediation of client attorney fee disputes were used as a starting point. So for fee arbitration purposes, we have two sets of model rules. One set for fee arbitrations and a second set for voluntary fee mediation. And the purpose behind these model rules is to provide an exemplar of best practices for local bar associations to use in drafting or revising their rules of procedure for their programs. And that ensures that regardless of where someone goes throughout the state, whether in a rural county or an urban county, you get more or less the same experience with built-in safeguards, for fairness. So these model rules, the source of these rules were from the Former Committee on Mandatory Fee Arbitration, which sunset in two thousand and nineteen, but the purpose lives on in the Committee on Professional Responsibility and Conduct, which has several seats reserved for members with experience with fee arbitration and attorney-client fee disputes. And you will find the model rules for voluntary fee mediation as exhibit, I think it's exhibit D to the staff report. So the second bullet point on this, on this slide is the, is that the, we are not raising the arbitration filing fee to, to add fee mediation. The Business and Professions Code is clear that the arbitration filing fee is the only administrative fee that can be charged for arbitration. So we propose to include four hours of voluntary fee mediation in the, under the existing arbitration filing fee, and that the fee mediation will take place by either phone or video conference. And this is consistent with how we currently administer our fee arbitration cases, which take place by phone or video conference as the default mode. And generally speaking, it has been going pretty well. The parties enjoy the convenience, our arbitrators also like the convenience of holding hearings by video conference. So we just wanted to maintain a consistency between the two programs. And then the third bullet point, we propose that the parties may agree to one additional mediation session. The mediator would have to agree to hold one addition, one additional session, and the rationale behind this is that the mediator is in the best position to determine whether or not the dispute can be settled. So the mediator can exercise their discretion declining to hold an additional mediation session if they don't believe that the dispute is capable of being settled in mediation. So last but not least, we have proposed amendments to the schedule of charges and deadlines. So for fee arbitration purposes, we have both the filing fee schedule as well as the refund schedule. We also have the arbitrator, the optional arbitrator compensation rate in the schedule of charges and deadlines. And the program is proposing to simplify the refund schedule. At present, it uses the lesser of either a percentage or a designated amount as the refund amount, and it involves math, and we would just like to simplify it. So it's a, it's a percentage. We also restructured the refund schedule to ensure that it's compatible with both existing fee arbitration refund rates and the new fee mediation refund. And then we also recalibrated the percentages of refunds to be commensurate with what, with the workload that it involves at each stage of the case. So we're proposing to offer a seventy-five percent refund of the arbitration filing fee if the parties agree to go to voluntary fee mediation. They actually participate in the mediation, and they successively settle the dispute, and then they execute a settlement agreement, and they return it to the state bar within the designated deadline. So this is a very specific circumstance where the party who pay the arbitration filing fee would be entitled to a seventy-five percent refund of that fee. The parties are still free to settle their fee dispute outside of fee arbitration and outside of fee mediation under this proposal, but they would not be eligible for a seventy-five percent filing fee refund. For cases that proceed to fee arbitration and settle after an arbitrator or a panel of arbitrators are appointed, that case would not be eligible for an arbitration filing fee refund. So we're trying to encourage the parties to settle earlier rather than later in the process. And then lastly, we're proposing an optional mediator compensation rate of a hundred fifty dollars per hour. That would be for time spent in mediation that exceeds four hours and would be paid equally to the, paid equally by the parties to the mediator directly. This is not a payment that would be going to the state bar. So that concludes my prepared remarks. I'm ready for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? This is a matter going out for public comment. We will share the resolution. And we will need a motion in a second. So moved. Moved by Trustee Giorgiello.
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Barahona. Roll call vote, please.
Bara, excuse me. Barahona?
Aye.
Verna Ventura?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison, not present. Huser?
Aye.
Giorgiello?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Stevens? Not present. Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
With eleven ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Great. Thank you very much, Isabel.
Thank you.
Chair, Chairwoman Cisneros, could you just remind us of the, what we have left today? A lot, it looks like.
Erica will be much better at doing that from you than.
I'm happy to do so. So we have one, two more items related to Rule of Professional Conduct seven point three, and then a presentation item on consolidation of metrics. I think the chair has anticipated a quick break after that, and then we will go into the presentation of all of the different metrics reports for several of our different offices, including the Office of Chief Trial Counsel, and we'll have a closed session. It's anticipated to be about an hour or less.
So I think our hope is still to finish, hopefully, well before five P M., maybe even around four P M., if things go well. So with that, thank you for the question.
We're just looking around the room. If we have a flight, we may have to excuse ourselves a little early.
Yes, we understand. We, with the understanding that we might pressure you if we start to lose quorum. I'm guessing there are other flights that one could stand by for.
Okay, in terms of agenda management, I would, could offer that we move the crew metrics to next meeting, if that would be helpful. It has been kicked off since May, but the, you know, the statistics are posted. Will you us an opportunity to liaison with our liaisons? Happy to bring it back in November, if that would be helpful.
That's actually frankly true of all of the metrics. So all of these items are posted metrics items. I will just say that a similar situation happened back in May, and so they haven't been presented in some time at this point. But all of the relevant materials are posted for the trustees to review. And there's no action on, of course, on any of those items. So that would be.
Starting with.
That's items seven point four through seven point seven.
Why don't we take the next item, and you all can reflect on your conscience, and we'll see how we feel about kicking these down the road to another board meeting. Item seven point two, Proposed Amendments. My flight's not till after six P M., so. Proposed Amendments to the Rule of Professional Conduct seven point three, Solicitation of Clients Request to Circulate for Public Comment. By Program Director Catherine O'Gerry and Managing Director Rachel Brewer.
Hello, good afternoon. I am Rachel Brewer, Managing Attorney with the Office of Professional Competence. It's nice to meet all of you. I'm looking forward to working with you. I will try and keep this very brief. As part of my role, I provide staff support to the Committee on Professional Responsibility and Conduct, or COPRAC. So I am here to request the board's approval to issue proposed amendments to Rule seven point three for a forty-five day public comment period. And at its March two thousand and twenty-five meeting, COPRAC received several public comments from domestic violence legal service providers across California that raised concerns regarding attorney's solicitation practices, specifically with regards to domestic violence restraining orders, or DVROs. Providers reported that attorneys would check the court docket and mail solicitation letters to DVRO respondents, and oftentimes, the respondents would receive those solicitation letters prior to being served with the domestic violence restraining order. And the concern was raised that this can jeopardize both the petitioner's safety as well as any minor children involved in the matter, as well as the safety of sheriff's deputies that are trying to serve the DVRO. It potentially allows respondents to evade service, and it can undermine the trust of the petitioners in the legal system. So with that in mind, COPRAC has proposed adding a new subsection to Solicitation of Clients seven point three that would prohibit solicitation of a respondent in a DVRO matter until service appears on the court docket. And I would like to note that several other states have already enacted similar measures, providing a temporary ban on attorney solicitation, both with respect specifically to DVRO matters, but some states also expand it even to all civil and criminal matters until proof of service, or they will set it for a time-limited period. So COPRAC received thirty-six written comments on this issue. There was overwhelming support. Seventy-eight percent of the comments supported the amendment, with several others supporting it if modified. COPRAC did receive three comments in opposition citing limitations on the right to counsel and constitutional concerns. COPRAC did specifically address these issues at its meetings, and they are addressed in the memo presented to the board today. I did hear the public commenter yesterday morning and encourage additional written public comment from stakeholders on this issue. So in the, in the interest of brevity, that concludes my presentation, but I am happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Sounds a good, very important effort. Any questions or comments from trustees?
I do.
Please go ahead.
So what are, could someone refresh my memory? What are the general protocols or rules that tell us what things need to be sent out for public comment versus, before we vote versus which things don't?
So any rule amendments that are substantive, any rule amendments need to go out to public comment. So any changes to the rules or any new rules require going out to public comment. If a rule comes back and, from public comment, and the board makes a substantive change that isn't clerical or minor, those would need to go out to public comment again. With respect to other items, excuse me, that's at the discretion of the board. I'm not aware of any policy that speaks to what types of issues need to go out for public comment, but in the past, there have been instances where fees were sent out for public comment to get, receive public input. So there's some discretion there as well.
What I'm wondering is whether there is, whether there are any exemptions to that? Is there, for instance, a public safety exemption where we could take action for the purposes of public safety? Either in the absence of sending it out for public comment or as an interim rule change that will be subject, that takes effect immediately and would, you know, that we could review again upon receipt of public comment. I'm asking these questions because when I read this item, it seems that people's lives are potentially in danger and that we have the ability to take some action that will promote public safety. So that's why I'm, I'm, I'm asking these questions of what, what's our ability to act quickly?
There are provisions in the, so the rule that I referred to with respect to adoption of rules is part of state bar rules. There are specific provisions pertaining to a situation, if there is an emergency, that a rule could be adopted for a period, I believe, of a hundred and twenty days, and that rule will be in effect only for a hundred and twenty days. And so, under those circumstances, but, you know, there needs to be an articulation of a rule that there is a existing emergency that would satisfy that requirement.
Trustee Tony, just to add, this is a little bit different because it's a Rule of Professional Conduct as well. So this rule has to be approved by the California Supreme Court. So it, it, it's not a state bar rule that the board could authorize on a temporary basis in the way that we have done. So we did this in COVID a fair amount of times, but this is a little bit different situation.
Thank you for the clarification. I just wanted to explore and, you know, just, let me ask another question. Is there a, I noticed that sometimes we send things out for thirty days, for sixty days, for ninety. This is forty-five, and I'm wondering, are there rules that, you know, tell us how many days for which types of rules?
So your, the rules again provide, the typical time period is forty-five days, but the, the board has the discretion to reduce that time period to thirty days or increase it to ninety days. And so just based on my experience in hearing deliberations of the board, on more sort of substantive topics, maybe controversial, complex, a longer time period is provided to reach as many and receive as many public comment as possible. In some circumstances, what might be non-controversial, or there's an urgency to get the rule moving faster than those, those were thirty days, but typically, it's a forty-five day, forty-five day period.
Thank you. This is not to cut off conversation, but to say that I intend to, to introduce this motion with an amendment for a thirty-day public comment, but I certainly don't want to, you know, stifle any other comments.
Sorry. Trustee Sewell followed by Trustee Good.
Understanding that this is a, a rule that has to go to the Supreme Court, I'm just, I'm sensitized to Trustee Tony's remarks, and I'm just wondering if there's a way, when we, if there's a way to categorize or triage things that we send to the, send to the Supreme Court in the sense of just sort of labeling them as public safety or labeling them as, you know, a, a rule that, that may need immediate action.
So I don't want to speak for Aline's team, but I think that they can expedite the petition in certain instances appropriate. I will just say, as it relates to the Rules of Professional Conduct, recently, in recent history, we have seen some urgency with rules for which the Supreme Court would like to move forward on an expedited basis, including Rule eight point three, which, following the. move forward on an expedited basis, including Rule 8.3, which, following the Board's submission to the court, was approved, I think, from approval by the Board to approval by the effective date of the Supreme Court, it was less than three months. So that we can move, they can move quickly and have certainly done so in recent history and with other rules as well related to duties of prosecutors and so forth.
Yes, trustee Good.
I completely support this and expediting it. It's obvious that there's a need. It's obvious it's a public safety issue, and I also know the many distinguished commentators that support it from legal aid organizations, attorneys, and then also some distinguished law professors as well. My question is, one of the commentators noted that maybe it should be expanded to include similar types of restraining orders in elder abuse cases. That sounded like a good idea to me, and I wondered if there had been any discussion about expanding this or not.
Yeah, so that was part of the feedback that COPRAC received when this was sent out for public comment, and we did not receive the same type of information and anecdotal evidence regarding the urgent safety risk that was presented with respect specifically to the domestic violence restraining orders. So COPRAC elected not to open it up to other types of temporary restraining orders.
All right. Any other comments? I believe we have a motion. Vice Chair Tony?
Yes, it's a motion to adopt, to send this out for public comment, but change it to 30 days. Yep, yep, there you go. Yep, thank you. That is it.
Second. Okay. Unless there's any other discussion, roll call vote, please. I'm sorry. Motion by Vice Chair Tony and second by trustee Stevens.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buenaventura?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Harrison, not present. Huser?
Aye.
Giorgiello?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Not present.
Not present. Cisneros?
Aye.
With 11 ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
If I may make one other comment, please. So, you know, we've just had five items that went out for public comment. I think it's important to expect at the November meeting that all of them will come to the regular agenda, that they will not come to the consent agenda. And the reason is because we, as trustees, need to be able to review public comment and see whether that helps us make our own decisions, our own positions. I know for myself, public comment is important for me to review. So there are a number of these I had no comment on before I voted. It's because I was waiting until the public comment comes back to express my positions. So I just wanted to serve notice.
Thank you. Next is item 7.3, consolidation of discipline system metrics reports. This will be presented by Josh Josiah Sweeting, Lead Program Analyst.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, trustees. My name is Josiah Sweeting. I'm a lead analyst in the Office of Research and Statistics, and today I'll be presenting a very brief informational item about the biannual case processing metrics report. This item was originally on February's agenda, but was not discussed due to time constraints, and today's item is largely unchanged. Just to provide a little bit of background, the biannual case processing metrics report was launched in November 2023 to provide a comprehensive overview of the entire discipline system. At that time, only OCTC and SDTC quarterly dashboards and the annual Discipline Report, or ADR, were in existence. But since then, two more dashboards have been added, the Complaint Review Unit, or CREW, and State Bar Court, SBC, and they are presented biannually. These dashboards may or may not be presented later in this agenda, but you'll have the opportunity to view those as well. Twenty of the 22 metrics from the report are now covered within these four dashboards, and the remaining two metrics, which are council representation rate and recidivism, are now in the annual operational report. And Attachment A of this item shows where each metric is currently reported. And so as a result of this, we've discontinued the biannual case processing metrics report since all of these metrics are reported elsewhere. So essentially, what this translates into is one less report for the Board to review, one less report for staff to produce, but all the same metrics are still reported. And that's all I have. I'll be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeting. I appreciate your brevity. Very, very helpful. Are there any questions on this matter?
What's two divided by one?
Thank you, trustee. With that, there's no action on this item, so with that, we'll move on to a five-minute break. Thank you very much, Mr. Sweeting. See you next time. Five-minute break, everyone, and getting back quickly helps us finish sooner. For this rule, 2201, program performance metrics, will be presented by Special Deputy Trial Counsel Administrator Stacia Laguna. If you could please promote, Ms. Laguna. Hello?
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Stacia Laguna. I'm the administrator for the Special Deputy Trial Counsel Program. For those that are new or may be unfamiliar, this is the program and panel of outside attorneys who take referrals from OCTC, where OCTC has a conflict in handling a disciplinary complaint or the state bar otherwise has a conflict. And this is our presentation on the second quarter metrics for 2025, and I will try to be brief. I know folks have places to be. Some key takeaways today, you'll notice that the SB 211 targets have been added to the dashboard. SB 211 prescribes shorter timeframes for case processing and a little more aggressive goals than the traditional timeframes. You'll be able to see those later on in the presentation. From Q1 to Q2 of this year, the number of incoming cases and cases closed were relatively stable, but we did have a higher share of older cases closed in Q2, so we were focused on working down our backlog. This in turn increased both the percentage of cases closed in backlog status and our averages for cases closed and case age at closure. But the other side of that is we significantly reduced our backlog. In Q1, it was 53%, and at the end of Q2, it was down to 25%. Duration of cases in intake and charging process were continuing downward, and in terms of quality, we had no cases reopened for new evidence or any other reason. Taking a look here, there's a lot to look at. I like to focus on the left-hand side of the screen. The bottom, we have the incoming cases. The top, we have the cases that were reaching a disposition. And the orange line you're looking at is the case clearance rate. So 45 cases come in, 38 cases reaching a closing disposition for an 84% clearance rate. The top right is the case age at closure. You'll see a big discrepancy there between the purple line, which is the median, and the top line in blue, which is the average. That's because we hold a relatively low caseload compared to OCTC, which may have thousands of cases at a time. Ours ranges from 40 to 60 in the pre-filing stages. The lower right is the inventory by case age, so you'll want to focus on the very far right. The blue you're seeing there is that the vast majority of our cases at the end of Q2 were less than six months old. That's what's represented by the blue. This very small yellow line is cases between six months and one year old, only two of those cases, and then eight cases that were older than one year. This page describes our backlog. As mentioned, we got our backlog down to 10 cases, which is a vast improvement from the 2024 figure you see right below there, representing 25% of the inventory. Last year, it was 62%, so big improvement there, and that's represented down below as well when you see the line going downward. This is the percentage of backlog over time. Top right is projections. That's based on taking the metrics for the first two quarters and extrapolating that over the year. These are what we can expect to see based on the data from the first two quarters. And down here, we're again seeing the percentage of cases closed in backlog. It was much higher for Q2 this year. Here we have the cases passing through each phase. We had 19 cases go through intake, 25 through investigation, and 16 cases were charged. That's quite high for us, but the vast majority of those were attributable to a single respondent who had many matters. Here on the right side, you're seeing the median and average lines for each of those phases. We were well within target range for intake. For investigation, we met the target for, for the traditional target and just off the mark for the SB 211 target, and we were well within range for the charging phase for both of those targets, SB 211 and the traditional target. This page reports our quality. Nothing much to report here. There were no reopens. All Walker petitions were denied in Q2, and the random audit for our program is annual. It's ongoing right now, so we will have updates on that in the future. This final page is a snapshot of all the key performance indicators that we have, we've discussed most of them. So we went over the case inventory clearance rate, and we discussed the backlog closures and the quality. On the bottom line, you can see that we met the goals for average days spent in investigation and average days to close for complex, but we missed the mark for non-complex cases. Bottom right, all in all, this is showing that just over 80% of our cases are closed within the target range. This glossary is, contains key terms. If you have any questions about those, they're in your materials, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. Any questions on our 2201 SDTC report?
Not so much a question about the report itself, but I know that in the past, if, please correct me if I'm misremembering this, that we've had some, some issues with retaining folks to, in the 2201 program in terms of folks to actually do the investigations, et cetera, and I'm just wondering how we're doing in terms of staffing.
I think our staffing levels are great. In the past couple of years, I've recruited some former OCTC attorneys, and those folks are able to hit the ground running because they have an understanding of how these cases are handled and plenty of experience in state bar court. So I think overall, we're seeing improvements in our metrics, and that's largely attributable to these folks that have direct experience.
Thank you. Yes, trustee Stevens?
Just a quick question for the cases that go kind of into or over that year timeframe. Is there a certain complexity to them, or what distinguishes them from the ones that you're able to wrap up?
That is a good question. I think one thing that makes state bar work interesting is that no two cases are alike. Sometimes we see delays in getting responses from respondents on questions that we're trying to get to the root of the issue. Sometimes subpoenas are needed, and there can be delays on that end when dealing with financial institutions. It really depends on the case. Sometimes you run into issues with cooperation from witnesses, so it really just depends. And that's a very lawyerly answer. I apologize, but it is on a case-by-case basis of what may cause that.
All right. Not seeing any other questions. Thank you, Ms. Laguna.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is item 7.5, a discussion regarding the Complaint Review Unit Performance Metrics, presented by Aline.
Hello, actually, my colleague, Carissa Anderson. Is she in? No? Yes. Okay. Carissa is actually the lead over our Complaint Review Unit in the Office of General Counsel, so I'm just going to turn it over to her for a very brief presentation.
Hello, Carissa.
Thank you, Aline. Hello, trustees. As Aline said, I oversee the Complaint Review Unit, and I will be presenting sort of our dashboard metrics for the second quarter of 2025. So let me open a presentation. So the, just as background, the Complaint Review Unit serves as sort of a second look review or an appeal of complaints that have been closed by the Office of Chief Trial Counsel, and these just get submitted by the complainants, and we review OCTC's determination to close the complaint. Okay. So the biggest takeaways that we saw in Q2 is twofold. We saw a really big jump in the number of CREW requests received each month or on a quarterly basis, so it jumped from 516 in Q4 all the way to 639 for Q2, and that is the highest volume we've seen in the last five years of this data being reported. Adding to that, our CREW resolutions declined fairly significantly from Q4, and we were down to only a 64% clearance rate. So receiving 639 new requests and only resolving 409 of those requests. So to a certain extent, some of these data trends were anticipated because we knew that we were going to have some staffing issues. We had some attorneys out on leave. We lost some funding for some contract attorneys that used to help us keep up on our numbers. So somewhat anticipated, but we are looking now, based on both of those two things, at an increased inventory or backlog, up at about 1,800 cases. A couple of changes that we have in the dashboard. This quarter, we added some measures for sort of quality metrics as opposed to just the quantitative metrics. So we're trying these out. Appreciate any feedback you have. We've added a metric for OCTC acceptance of CREW's recommendations to reopen. This past quarter, it was 100%. There are instances where OCTC may decline or not accept one of our recommendations, and there can be some, you know, qualitative indicators there, things that we can learn from. We also added a metric for Walker petitions denied. This also was, 100% of Walker petitions were denied in Q2. This metric's also reported, I believe, by 2201 and by OCTC. So we've added those, and this is just sort of a general snippet of our data over the last five years, but you can see we had fairly good staffing towards the end of 2024, and our clearance rate was above 100%. It has declined over the last couple of quarters, and our requests received have gone up. And this is our inventory, which you can see is just sort of consistently climbing. We had, again, at the end of 2024, been making some We had, again, at the end of 2024, been making some impact into our backlog, but now we're up at about 1,800 cases as of the end of Q2. And so then these are our two new qualitative metrics, just looking at crew recommendations adopted by OCTC, or rather, accepted, and then Walker petitions denied by the Supreme And then lastly, just a brief update. The Complaint Review Unit, NOGC, is trying out a law student externship pilot program where the law student extern would work specifically in the Complaint Review Unit to gain experience in the discipline system. And so for spring 2026, we're seeking one to two law student externs for that. We were unable to get any for the fall 2025 semester, but we've made some changes to our recruitment and hoping to get some of those starting in the spring semester. So keeping that brief, I am open to any questions.
All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, Carissa.
Thank you.
Next is item 7.6, a discussion regarding the State Bar Court Program Performance Metrics. Kathy Scher and Presiding Judge Hahn.
Hello again.
Hello.
Yeah, so this is my first time presenting on the State Bar Court's performance metrics, and I have to offer Judge Hahn's regrets. He was on a plane back to Los Angeles after having been in San Francisco yesterday and today for oral argument. So next slide, please. So to begin with the basics, State Bar Court is an independent court that adjudicates attorney disciplinary and regulatory matters. The court makes recommendations to the Supreme Court for suspensions or disbarment, and for lesser offenses can issue approvals. The court has a hearing department, which is our trial level, and a review department, which is our... Next slide. Giving a very high-level overview of the metrics for second quarter of 2025, the court continues to meet almost all of its performance targets, including closing 100% of cases within the target timelines for pre-filing stage, hearing stage, and review. So let's move on to those slides to go through those details. So this slide gives some more detail on some of those key indicators. In the second quarter of 2025, as you can see on the left, there were 284 cases pending in the State Bar Court. The court's caseload clearance rate is 132%, meaning the court is closing more cases than are filed in for that quarter. 100% of cases in pre-filing settlement conference stage, hearing stage, and review stage were closed in those stages within our target timelines, as shown on the upper right. And then similarly, average days spent in each stage was within target for both pre-filing settlement conference stage and hearing stage, and slightly above target in our review stage. And I'll just note that because we have relatively few cases in review at any given time compared to hearing and pre-filing settlement, just a few complex cases in a particular quarter can put the average over the target for our average in review. The next slide, please. So then this slide shows the case inventory at various stages over the quarters. At the end of second quarter of 2025, there were 107 cases in hearing and eight cases in review. I do want to note that although you can see there's been something of a decline in overall case inventory, the court is finding currently that the cases that are brought to it are the more complex cases, which means that the decline in the number of cases does not necessarily also mean there's decline in workload for the court. Next slide, please. So this slide goes to cases closed in backlog. The backlog is comprised of cases that have failed to meet case closure time standards. As we reviewed earlier, the court has been closing 100% of cases within the target timelines. So for this quarter, there were no cases closed in backlog status in either hearing or review. So this slide shows the State Bar Court's clearance rate, which is the number of cases closed during the quarter divided by the number of incoming cases during that same quarter. The court has consistently closed more cases than were filed, not just for this quarter, but over the past, as you can see from the yellow line at the top of the chart. Next slide. It is just shows number of cases closed. 18 cases were closed in our hearing department in second quarter of 2025, and three cases closed in review. Excellent. So these graphs show the average case processing time in hearing and in review. Average case processing time in hearing was below our 187-day target, that 178 days. Review cases exceeded the 269-day target for review with an average of 298 days for case processing time in hearing in second quarter of 2025. And again, I'll note that because we have a low number of cases in review compared to our hearing department, if we have one or two cases that take longer time for whatever reason, because we have more complex cases, that can put the average over the... Next slide. So this slide shows the average number of days spent in pre-filing settlement conference stage in cases. Just to go over what pre-filing settlement conferences are, as the name suggests, it's a chance for the respondent to have a settlement conference that's facilitated by a State Bar Court judge before the disciplinary charges are filed. That means it's an opportunity for an attorney to resolve the case before it goes on their public record, because the files have not, the charges have not yet been filed. The average time spent on this for this quarter was three days, and I think that relates directly, as you can see on the bottom, that scheduled sessions simply means, did they have one pre-filing settlement conference? Did they wind up having the second pre-filing settlement conference? And as you can see, the vast majority of cases in second quarter 2025 and really in general, they only spend, they only do one pre-filing settlement conference session. It was 88 pre-filing settlement cases in this group. So next slide, please. So this shows discipline outcomes by quarter. These numbers vary greatly from quarter to quarter. It really all depends on the nature of the cases, what the kind of distribution, if you will, of different kinds of discipline will be in a given quarter, so that it's not necessarily something where you can even, where you would even expect to find trends. For second quarter of 2025, slightly over half of the cases in State Bar Court, 31 cases, resulted in a license suspension, either actual or state, and those are the two bottom parts on the left, showing actual suspensions and state suspensions. And then slightly fewer than that, 26 cases resulted in disbarment with relatively low numbers of approvals in that way. There were one private approval and zero public approvals during... And next slide, please. And as I mentioned earlier, when we were talking about the rules for the Alternative Discipline Program, this is the first time that we have included slides giving some of the data on that program in our metric slides. So this is the first of three slides on the ADP. And again, I'm going to start with the caveat that we have very little data on the program at this point. Our data starts in 2020, and there are relatively few people participating, so it's really just preliminary numbers at this point. The first slide shows the numbers of attorneys accepted into ADP for each year from 2020 to 2024, and then the number who completed ADP for each of those years and the number who were terminated from the program. The completion rate, looking at attorneys who complete within four years of being accepted into the program, is high. It has ranged from 84% to 100% for the three years that we've measured that four-year completion. Next slide, please. And this is the same graphs that were shown in the slides regarding the ADP rules regarding recidivism. And again, I want to say, I don't think we can take these, draw any hard or fast conclusions from these slides, but overall, looking at the recidivism rates for attorneys who complete the ADP program do appear to be roughly similar to those for all disciplined attorneys. Looking at attorneys who are disciplined within one year of completing the program, and that is the yellow line on the bottom of the left-hand chart. The rate was zero, and then there was that one year where the rate was 20%, but again, representing a relatively small number of attorneys, because we don't have that many attorneys in ADP. And then you can see on the right, three-year recidivism rate. We only have two years of data to go on, which is the people who completed in 2020 are people who completed in 2021, to allow for those three years. And if the recidivism rate measured by attorneys who were actually disciplined was 0% for both of those years, and you can see the line just above that is the comparison to all disciplined attorneys, and that was around 5%. So again, you know, we're talking roughly comparable, and we will know more when we have a few more years' data, and then we can start to like average across these for the ADP programs, and that will have a bigger sample spot. Next slide, please. Okay, this is the last slide regarding the ADP program, and it compares demographics for ADP participants to those for the overall population of disciplined attorneys and all active attorneys. As the slide notes, and as you can see, the demographics are roughly comparable. There is something of an over-representation of male attorneys in the ADP program and also of Latino. And then next slide, please. This is just our glossary for your reference, and next slide. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Any questions on this matter? Seeing none, I think you did a great job filling us in. Thanks for your time today. Next is our discussion regarding Chief Trial Counsel Program Performance Metrics, item 7.7.
Okay, so I'll try and keep this fairly quick, so I'm just going to highlight general trends, but as I pop up individual slides, if you have questions, feel free to interrupt me and ask any questions. So basically, this is the dashboard. We're reporting here for three quarters, Q4 2024, Q1 2025, and Q2 2025. The last report gave was in November of last year. The dashboard that you're going to see here looks a little bit different than the last Press a little harder. Okay. Apparently, I have no strength in my thumb. So the dashboard here looks a little bit different. We've added two new pages that will report on our diversion programs. You heard a little bit earlier about the proposed mediation in fee arbitration, which is the third diversion program. A slide on that will be added once that program goes up. We've now rearranged the pages so that the trend data precedes the summary of the key performance indicators, and as I think you heard from Stacia, we have at the, to comply with the state auditor recommendation, we have added alternative targets based on the revised proposed case processing standards known as the SB 211 Case Processing Standards. I can see this is going to be fun. All right, so here, a few things I want to highlight here in terms of trends. First, on the bottom left, you can see incoming cases. We have seen a trend up in terms of incoming cases. To break this down by fiscal year, if you look at fiscal year 2025, which is the year ending Q2 2025, our case openings are the highest they have ever been, even going back to the pre-pandemic 2019 year. So we've seen a 17% increase from fiscal year 2024, a 38% increase from what was the pandemic low in fiscal year 2021, and a 15% increase from pre-pandemic year fiscal year 2019. So bottom line, more cases coming in than ever. That affects our turnover rate, our closure rate. As you can see, we've had a period where it dipped down below 100% again, although we got it back up. And so looking at the top left, you can see that despite the huge increase in cases coming in, we have managed to keep our case closure rate up close to above 100% for most of the time. That's a good thing. That brings us to the inventory by case age on the right, which is also a trend that I would like people to focus on, which is, you can see a gradual downward trend in the overall inventory, which is something we've been focused on. And if you look at the relative size of the blue as compared to the light orange and the dark orange, those are relative case ages. So you can see that we have decreased the size of our inventory while also altering the age makeup of the inventory, so that now our inventory is younger rather than older. This has been one of our focuses over the last year in particular, over 2024 and the first part of 2025, is to focus on closing out our older inventory. In particular, we've been focusing on cases that are 750 days old or older, of which we had a large number. So we have done that. The case age at closure at the top, you can see that, you know, for the median, there's been a slight gradual downward trend. It's very slight, so you don't see it that much. The average, we've seen an upward trend. The average basically builds in the fact that the outliers that we're closing tend to be the older cases, and so that's driving the average up. The median is basically staying about the same. So those are kind of the large-scale trends there. For 2025, for calendar year 2024, we set a target within OCTC of reducing our inventory by 15%. We actually met that. For 2025, we have adjusted that target based on both the increased number of cases coming in and our decrease in staffing that has occurred as a result of the voluntary reduction in force. We've reduced that target to 13%. I will tell you that if the number of cases continues to come in at the level they are at, we are already seeing the impact of that, and we're seeing the impact of our reduced staffing. Right now, we're at about a 10% vacancy rate, which for us means somewhere between 25 and 30 positions down in terms of handling that. So we are trying to do this, and I can talk a little bit about some of the things we're doing to try to do that if I have time, but I'll move on quickly. So this is the backlog based on the current backlog measures, which are 180 days for non-complex cases and 365 days for complex cases. On the left, you can see the open cases in backlog status. This is the number we focus on more and try to get this number down. You can see that it's leveled out after a large increase going back to 2020. The backlog, the open backlog, was gradually increasing up to 44% in quarter Q2 2024. We've since leveled it out and reduced it a little. This has been one of our goals, is to reduce the open cases backlog. We've now leveled it out, and we're hoping to keep that trend turned around and moving down now. On the right, the cases closed in backlog status. We anticipate that this is actually going to go up over the next year, next couple of years, as we again focus on closing out our older cases, which will automatically drive up that number. You can see that it's generally stayed right around the 13% to 16% kind of on average over time. We may see that going up over the next few quarters. We may see that going up over the next few quarters. Um, there was talk about, um, the new SB 211 targets, so, uh, if you recall, these are the targets that were set for backlog, um, in the proposed case processing standards. We've actually used these to derive, um, targets. Um, we use these targets for each of our, uh, case stages, and when, then we've also derived an overall single metric, basically by taking the totals of the cases in each stage that are in backlog. Um, that then gives us this new page, which we've added to track using the SB 211 backlog standards, um, and this is again to comply with, this is to comply with the state auditor's recommendation. So on the top left, you'll see our overall metric, um, for backlog, percentage open in backlog, percentage closed in backlog, using the SB 211 backlog standards that are different depending on case stage. And then down below, you can see a breakdown by each case stage to see which cases in that stage are outside of backlog for that particular stage. Um, so for example, um, on the right for cases closed in backlog, you can see that we have different, um, metrics and targets for each stage. So for example, in investigation, we have a different SB 211 target, 180 days for high priority, that's high risk to public protection cases, that are not complex. And so what we'll be reporting over time is how the backlog varies for each of these case categories as we move forward, so that you can see that in addition to the total backlog number. Moving to our next page, um, we've included in the PowerPoint, so you can see how we derived the SB 211 targets, um, that we're using from the actual SB 211 standards, um, and that's basically the boxes and the arrows. Um, I will skip over that, um, and get to the slide that just has now what you saw that Stacia showed essentially, which is the same graphics, showing for each case stage, both the number of cases passing through that phase, which is the graph on the left, and then on the right, the duration of cases in each phase. Looking at the numbers on the right, the duration of cases in each stage. Um, for us, for intake, um, we were within the target, um, both the SB 211 target and our normal target, which is the same 30 days. We met that target for both the average and the median for cases in intake, although I will note that there has been a gradual trend up on the right side of the graph for the case age in intake. That's because of the increasing number of cases coming in, meaning that some are sitting longer in intake. Um, in investigation, if you look at the number, you can see that we are within our target, both the SB 211 target and the ordinary target for median, but we are not for the, um, average is above, suggesting that there are some cases that are driving that number up. Uh, again, that seems to be driven by the complex cases, um, that we're seeing more of, um, and that are more of which are moving into, um, investigation. So that you understand the numbers, roughly 60% of our cases are disposed of in intake, um, roughly 36% of our cases are disposed of in investigation, and it's a much smaller number that moves to charging, roughly 4% of our cases. So that gives you a sense of how these numbers affect our overall inventory and overall case age. So, um, these are our quality measures, um, similar to the ones you've heard discussed before. For us, there are basically three quality measures. One, uh, the percentage of cases that the complaint review unit that you just heard about recommends for reopening, that's shown in the top left. As you can see, um, we've remained kind of well below our target of 2% or less over the last significant period. We were at 0.5% for Q2 2025. Um, on the bottom left is Walker petitions. Um, you heard those talked about by crew as well. That would be the Supreme Court saying, no, this case needs to be reopened. You can see our target there is to have none of those, and we have had that for most of the period. Um, on the top right is the random audit. Um, every six months, for every six months' worth of cases, um, we have outside auditors come in and do a random sample of our closures, um, to analyze those and identify any issues and identify the number of cases that they recommend for reopening for a variety of reasons. Um, you can see that for the last two quarters, we've had more recommendation, for the last two random audits, um, we have had more recommendations for reopening that exceed our target number of 4.2. Um, we are looking into that, and we'll try to address that. We'll be reporting on the most recent audit at the November meeting, so we'll go into more detail about what we found out about why that was and what we can do to address For our key performance indicators, again, um, I'll skip over, we've provided you with the mechanisms showing how we calculated the new SB 211 targets. Um, in the interest of time, I'll skip over that, but, um, if anybody looks at that and has any questions, I can explain. So this then is our summary page with our key performance indicators. Um, in short, um, hitting some of the highlights, we've had an improvement in our inventory and our caseload clearance rate is, has improved, although it's still below our overall target of 120%, which we would like to get to as a mechanism for reducing our inventory. I don't expect we're going to get there. Um, our crew reopens are within target, our random audit reopens are outside of target, which is something we need to look at. The overall percentage of cases closed in backlog using the SB 211 measure is 20%, whereas it should be 10%. Um, again, I don't expect that we'll get to the 10% target in any near term, but that's a long-term target. The average days spent in investigation, um, you can see that we've exceeded the target um, for both non-complex and complex cases, although we have seen an improvement from Q1 to Q2 of 2025. Um, the same is true for average days to close. We've exceeded the target, but we did see improvements in those times. Um, and then the percent of cases closed within target for non-complex cases, we are closing 91%, which is at our target in less than 180 days. But our complex cases, uh, appear to be driving, um, the increases in case age. We only matched our target for 70% of those. So again, it seems to be the complex cases that are driving, um, the issues with timing in terms of handling cases. Um, and you heard a little bit of discussion about what can drive those complex cases. It's the things you've heard. Um, difficulties in getting responses from respondents, um, difficulties in getting subpoenaed records that take time to get, um, other issues in terms of investigating cases. This is one of the new pages that tracks our diversion program. Um, we have in, added this page in expectation of the legislative requirement that we will have to submit a report on our diversion program in, I believe it's April of 2027, so we're starting to gather the data for that. Um, right now, we're tracking the number of cases opened, um, what the, uh, results of those are, and you can see that in our diversion cases, um, we opened 1,135 cases. We gave diversion to 96% of those. The diversion was successfully completed. That's a good thing. Um, for attorneys, it was 975 attorneys. That's because some attorneys had multiple cases in which we granted diversion, and you can see the success rate again is 97%, meaning they complied with all conditions, and we ultimately closed the case. Um, you can see a slight drop in the number of, yeah, cases that we initiated diversion in from Q4 2024 to Q2 2025. Um, we want to keep that level up, um, to increase the number of cases that go into diversion, because that frees up our resources to work on the more complex cases. Um, we adjusted our diversion guidelines, um, at the end of 2024 to actually expand them and allow more cases in. We're going to be re-looking at that at the end of 2025 to potentially expand our diversion criteria again, to allow more people to be at least eligible for diversion. This is the other diversion program, which is the Public Trust Liaison's Attorney Client Bridge Program, um, which basically offers a non-disciplinary mechanism for people who have complaints that their attorneys aren't communicating with them, or that their attorneys haven't returned their files. Um, they do a sort of mediation outside of the disciplinary program for complainants who choose to go that route. They'll reach out to the attorney, they'll reach out to the complainant, they'll try and resolve it informally. Um, if they do resolve it informally, that means that that person doesn't have any need to file a disciplinary complaint, because if we got a disciplinary complaint on that, we'd essentially do the same thing. Um, so it solves that in advance. Um, on the right, you can see a tracking of that. Um, the goal here, um, is to track the number of cases in which they resolve it against, um, our, our reporting of those types of complaints, to see if they match up. So far, they have. In other words, the suggestion is that they are removing cases from our system, uh, but the numbers are too small right now to draw kind of firm conclusions. Next, our filings, disciplinary filings, charges, stipulations, and criminal convictions. Um, a few kind of general trends here. Um, after a downturn, we've started to see an uptick in the notices of disciplinary charges. Stipulations kind of fluctuate, that depends on settlement. Criminal conviction transmittals, we continue our downward trend. Um, that's because we are slowly working through and finishing up the backlog of criminal conviction referrals that we got in 2019 and 2020 as a result of the re-fingerprinting of all attorneys. Um, so we are slowly getting through that and getting back to normal. I included, but will not go through, um, I think it's important to remember that it's not just numbers, it's individual cases, so I wanted to give you a sense of some of the cases we have filed, some of the cases we've gotten stipulations in, some of the cases we've gotten trial results in. I won't go through those, but there are a couple of kind of highlights and trends I want to bring out, which we will also highlight in the ADR, uh, which is, one, um, the number of complex cases and the amount of work that goes into some of these individual cases, which isn't necessarily reflected in the statistics. Um, and two, a number of cases that have focused, as we are trying to do, on kind of harm to more vulnerable victims, whether that be tenants and eviction cases, um, incompetent individuals whose trustees breached their trust, um, and/or criminal defendants, incarcerated individuals, um, or immigration cases, where we continue to see a large number of complaints about immigration attorneys. So I've given you highlights of some of those cases. I won't go through them, um, but you've got those and can look at those. Um, so I'll turn to-
Uh, George, can I ask one question?
Yes.
What, what does the term "abated due to pending criminal investigation" mean? That's different from all the other ones.
Yes, so abatement is if we file a disciplinary action, um, in this case, the individual moved to stay our disciplinary proceeding pending a criminal investigation that might result in charges. Um, they made that motion to the state bar court. Um, there is a rule of procedure that allows the state bar court to look at a number of factors in determining whether to abate, in other words, whether to suspend our disciplinary proceedings. That's what happened in this case, pending the criminal investigation.
Just puts it on pause.
Yes, puts it on pause, and so that case, um, is still pending. Um, I will note that, you know, for purposes of data reporting, that case is aging, um, even though it's really suspended. Um, and that's, uh, that's simply a fact, so. So this is our slide that reports, and we try to track to make sure that we don't see any abnormal increases, um, in respondents, attorneys with 15 or more complaints or 40 or more complaints. So we typically see this range, um, for the 15-plus complaints, we typically see this in the range of somewhere between 3 and 8%, and that's what we're seeing this quarter. For 40-plus percent, 40-plus complaints, we typically see it somewhere between 1 and 3%, and again, that's what we're seeing, so we're not seeing an abnormal deviation um, in that number. This is our complaining witness survey results. Every time we close a case, at the end, there is an invitation to the complainant who has had their complaint closed to respond to a survey. Um, it's voluntary, um, so there are self-selection issues in terms of who responds and what they say, um, but you can see a tracking over time of their responses for both access, in other words, questions designed to elicit their opinions on whether they thought there was appropriate access to the discipline system, and then fairness in terms of result. Generally consistent, um, complainants who have their complaints closed are not happy, um, with the fairness, um, because we've told them their complaint is essentially We've also then, I've also added then, um, a couple of slides just on some work that isn't measured by the statistics, our appellate work, um, and our work in other areas such as assumptions of attorney files for attorneys who, um, in particular, die or are otherwise incapacitated. Um, we often then end up having to go in and take over their office files and attempt to distribute those files out to the clients, so I wanted to give you a sense of the volume of what that entails, which I think this slide, um, shows you. Uh, that is not tracked in our metrics, but it is work that we do and that, that is important. Our glossary, and then any questions.
Any questions for George? Yes, Justy Good.
Thanks for the comprehensive report, George, and frankly, given you're down all of those people, you're, you're doing okay, I think. A question for you, in terms of the uptick that you saw in Q2, I know Q3 isn't over, but I'm wondering if you have a sense of what that kind of looks like.
Our, our sense is that the uptick is continuing. In other words, in Q3, we're seeing cases come in at the same kind of rate that we saw in Q2. Um, we'll look at the numbers at the end of the quarter, but we're not seeing any, any, we're not seeing any downturn. This appears to be the new normal right now.
Okay, and I'm sure you're analyzing trends to see if, for example, immigration cases represent a huge portion of those or some other kinds of cases.
Yeah, we are, we are trying to look at that. We're also trying to look at, I mean, um, so far, um, just quickly looking at the, the numbers, um, we're not seeing a corresponding increase in the number of cases proceeding to charging, which suggests that a large number of the increased in complaints are not complaints. In other words, we tend to be seeing a large increase in complaints that would ordinarily close in any event. Um, so that's a plus, um, but it's also a, a minus. In other words, those cases still take time and resources to work on, um, but, um, we're not seeing, we're not seeing a significant increase in cases suggesting that there is a significant increase in, uh, bad attorney conduct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Justy Sawal.
George, we knew that the, um, the staffing reductions were going to have a, probably disproportionate impact on OCTC, and I guess my question is, out of the, the staff that you're down, are you going to be able to, uh, are, are any of those positions, positions you're going to be able to, to fill?
Right now, no. Um, we're looking at trying to fill with other mechanisms, so we've, um, we've adopted a number of procedural changes to try and streamline even more of our procedures. Um, we're also looking at some technical tools, so we have a new program that we've adopted that we're using to, uh, more quickly generate many of our forms, um, and that seems to be working very well, um, to increase efficiency in handling individual cases. We are also, um, and I'll speak to Mr. Tony when I say this, we are also, um, piloting an AI solution, um, that we hope will increase our efficiency in particular in handling in cases in intake. Um, uh, we're still in the process of trying that out, um, but the initial results are very promising. Um, it will obviously still require human review, but we're hoping that it will facilitate our initial review of complaints, um, and, uh, the generation of some information regarding those complaints that will speed up how attorneys can handle and categorize those cases and move them forward to investigation. Results to come.
Anyone else? George, thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you.
At this time, the Board of Trustees will now move into a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 11126, Subdivision E2A, and Government Code Section 11126, Subdivision E2BI, to discuss the closed session agenda. We are hopeful or expecting that closed session may run for about one hour. After closed session completes, whenever that is, we will come back into open session and make any, um, announcements if necessary. And with that, um, we'll go into closed session. And with that, we'll go into closed session.
We are live and recording.
Good afternoon, everyone. We are back into our open session, and we have nothing to report out of our closed session. And with that, we will have completed the agenda of the September State Bar Board of Trustees meetings, and with that, we'll end the meeting. Thank you very much.